Thanks, everybody, for coming. This is the November 1st, 2023 special meeting that we had in the past and we have it again today of West Dakota Water Development District. First thing we do to start out is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time for the roll call, Dan.
Okay, roll call, November 1st, 2023. Coth, here.
Birkey. Here.
Driscoll.
Here.
McGregor.
Here.
Ackerman.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Mack.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Here.
We have one absentee, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda for today. Is there a motion for that?
So move.
Moved by.
McGregor.
McGregor, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor who indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next item is introductions, so we'll start with the directors, Board of Directors for the Water Development District first, and we'll start with Dan, our Administrator.
Thank you, I'm Dan Malali, the Program Administrator.
I'm Craig Care, I'm the Director for Area 9, which is kind of the West Boulevard area all the way from the south go up to the interstate.
And I'm Dan Birkey, I'm the Chairman of the West Dakota Water Development District and represent Area Number 2.
I am Thomas Mack, I represent Area 7 in the Water Development District, which is South Central Rapids, so kind of the Robbinsdale area, and I am the Vice Chair.
Ron Coth on the Treasure and an Area 1 Director. Area 1 is Western Rapid City out into the hills towards Rapid City.
Dan Driscoll, Area 3, which is south of Thomas Mack's area, south to the Tony line.
Cheryl Rowe, District 6, which is on the west side of Rapid City, and it's kind of a large area, and also the Secretary.
Scott McGregor, Area 4, basically Cheyenne River going west to Tactron Boulevard and on redistricting, we'll pick up the Hart Ranch area next time in District 4.
I'm Robert Ackerman, Director for Area 5, and nice to see you all here.
We're going to continue to go around the table, introduce yourself and who you're with, so we'll start, you're next in line.
Hi, I'm Katie Leclair, I recently joined Western Dakota Regional Water District, or System, and I'm excited to be working with Cheryl, our Executive Director, and I believe I'm a resident of Area 9 for my description.
I'm Alan Anderson, I'm the current Chair of the Rapid City Sustainability Committee, my first time at a meeting when I came here to listen and be informed.
Dustin Dale, I'm for 8 West, here for Western Dakota Regional Water System, for water conservation. Jeremy Pence on the Area 1 District Supervisor for Rapid City for South Dakota Game Fish and Fish.
Julie Schardling, I've been Director of Black Hills Spring Water Alliance.
I'm Joanna Oates, I'm with the South Dakota Department of Environmental Resources and the Wildlife Conservation Department.
I'm Jamie Howlett, with the PSC.
Melissa Smith, Bureau of National Weather Service, here Rapid City.
Chief of Health and Safety, Bureau of Information and Management, Rapid City.
Ron Baines, Bureau of Renovation, Rapid City, Department of Health and.
I'm Crystal Lesmister, I'm also Bureau of Information and Management, Rapid City.
Caleb Horchstrad, I'm the Chief Hydrologist, here Rapid City, for.
Alden Atherton with USGS.
Aeneas Ross, I'm with National Park Service, the Inventory and Monitoring Office, Rapid City.
Tim New York, representing myself, but oldest lawyer, I'm a member of the Board of Water and Natural Resources, or Water Management, excuse me.
I'm Eric Boyd, I'm the Water Superintendent for the City of Rapid City.
Cheryl Chapman, Executive Director, Western Dakota Regional Water System.
Jesse Wilkins, I'm an Environmental Scientist at South Dakota Department of Environmental Resources, Leadership Director.
Charles Stevenson, I'm a Hydrologist, right through the National Park Service, help the Central Michigan.
Okay, thank you, welcome again. I'm going to, we're going to have a brief discussion on some of the projects that West Dakota has been involved with, and Craig Care is going to give that presentation on our behalf.
I guess you're going to jump in too, right, Dan? I'm going to do part of it.
Yeah, and Dan Driscoll's going to do part of it too.
Yeah, so this is what happens when you're putting together the agenda and suddenly the day before the presentation, you realize that you forgot to ask the Director from Area 3 to do the presentation for the West Dakota Water Development District. Call him up and say, I need some help, so we're going to tag team it. Are you going to stand over here? I thought I meant to stand here, is that okay, or do you want me to stand over there? Oh, you want me over there, I can do it, okay. Audio, we got audio.
Can everybody hear him?
No.
No, can't hear me? Do I need to hold that? Just try it now. Okay, is that better? Not really. Okay, I can't project over there. How about if I hold this? Oh, you can, it'd be good, you'll have a little more vision there. Well, I'm not going to wander too far. Okay, this is better? All right, thanks. Okay, so, West Dakota Water Development District, we're a political subdivision of the state of South Dakota, and we're under the South Dakota Water Conservancy District's jurisdiction. There's seven Water Development Districts in the county, in the state. Our area is Pennington County, west of the Cheyenne River. We have nine Directors, eight of whom are here, we serve four-year terms, and our meeting schedule's on our website. Our mission primarily, we don't, we don't have any water ourselves, we don't move any water, we don't really handle any of the water, wastewater products, but we do support entities that do those types of projects. So water conservation, water management, any of those types of things that are going on in our area, we're interested in able to support other entities with studies or with grants for funding for projects' construction. So we'll take just about anybody for a partner, anything from state and federal agencies on down to individual landowners, and anybody in between, research, consultants that are doing projects, water supply organizations, wastewater, any of those things we'd be interested in. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our past projects that we've done, and Dan Driscoll will talk a little later in detail about some of the stuff we've got going on right now. We've got the Trinity Eco Prayer Park that is downtown, a real visible feature, 4th and St. Joseph Street, some water control and flood control type work as far as sediment removal and just cleaning up the water and then retaining it a little while in flood storage. We also have worked with High Seegu Meadows for pump house safety upgrade, they, and we'll show a picture of that here in a minute, what they did. Keystone Drinking Water System Upgrade, they did some automation and things that out there that they needed some help with, we helped them with that on money. We also inventoried impervious areas in Rapid City, looking at what could they do for different flood detention type issues. We've got the Rapid City Green Roof Project, if you haven't looked at that, out at the airport, take a look next time you're out there. We worked with Westbury Trails on some of their fire rehabilitation years ago, and also water quality effects of septic systems, we did some studies there and do some, are you kind of following, can you see what I'm doing? So, we followed, we followed some of those things and worked on partnering with people in septic type problems. Here's a picture of that Trinity Park, Echo Park, there you go, and so, I can't see that over there because I forgot my glasses. So we've got, we've got that downtown, it's an interesting feature, if you get a chance to walk around and look at it, it's interesting. The High Seegu Meadows Pump House was just a vault that they crawled down into, and so when they were going to remodel and update their system, we helped them there with some safety aspects of that, so they've actually got an entryway, makes it a lot easier to maintain things, and also helps their confined space entry problems. And there's a picture of the Rapid City Green Roofs Project. So past projects we've done, sometimes projects balloon outside of our area, we started one on Missouri River Pipeline because we held a water rights permit for Missouri River Water in the name of the district, and that got beyond our borders, and so actually Cheryl Chapman's here to talk about that in a little bigger context as a Western Dakota Regional Water System, she'll talk about that a little later today. We also support studies, the Rotating Basins Project by South Dakota DAA and R, we've supported dredging at Canyon Lake, and we've done some pre and post dredging water sampling just to see how that turned out. We've dealt with sources of bacteria in Rapid Creek and the Didymo Research that was done, supported those things. So water quality issues that, so many more past projects, all right. So we've got geologic mapping relative to groundwater resources with South Dakota Mines, we've worked with USGS on several projects, including all the way back from the hydrology study that was done in the 90s, up to current time on different studies they're doing. And then, switch to the picture of the next one here, next slide, yeah, there we go. We've got the South Dakota Mines Living Laboratory that we also supported, some studies there that they were doing, just different plots, trying to control erosion on exposed shale soils, and Dan Driscoll's going to talk about that a little bit more on some of the applications of what we learned on there and some of the advances that were made after this, some of these studies.
I guess that's my cue, huh, Craig?
No, not quite yet, not yet, Dan. Hold on, you'll get your cue pretty quick. So, current projects, I want to talk about those first, we've got long-term projects on stream gauges that we do, supporting USGS and their, their stream gauging, monitoring efforts. We also partner with South Dakota Game Fish and Parks, have the last couple of years on boat inspection for invasive species. We're partnering currently with Pennington County Conservation District on implementation of conservation practices along Rapid Creek, any kind of riparian habitat improvement or erosion control, those types of projects are in there. We also have some assistance right now with Green Valley Sanitary District who's upgrading or installing a sewer system, sewer collection system out there, and it looks like that's going to be a pressure system, that's their current plan, and so we'll be interested to see a presentation from them here in a couple of years when they finish that. We're also co-sponsor of the Black Hills Hydrology Study that goes on, and currently we have, go ahead and make the slide, Dan, we currently have an application for a grant in with the Bureau of Reclamation's Water Smart Applied Sciences Grant Program for developing a computer model for operations of Pactola Deerfield and Rapid Creek Systems, in partnership with Rapid City, we've got support from all those organizations listed there, the Game Fish and Parks, Fly Fishers, Irrigators, Corv Engineers is interested in it, Trout Unlimited, the Forest Service has got some interest in that, and of course Rapid Valley Sanitation District as well. And so, once that is decided next April, hopefully we're successful and get that grant, then there'll be some public meetings with stakeholders, and you'll hear more about what's going on with that program. So, the next part of this is going to be Dan Driscoll speaking about some of the projects to improve the water quality management in Rapid Creek by reducing some of the suspended solids transmission. Now, I've got to warn you, Dan will take questions, but be careful when you raise your hand because he's also looking for volunteers, so be clear you're asking for question instead of volunteering, because he will sign you up in a minute, and I think he's already got your email addresses. So, anyway, Dan, it's up to you.
Well, thanks, Greg, and it's good to see so many people here, so I just keep that, or you need that, I guess.
I kind of have to look at the next guy.
Okay, that'll be fine. Your voice is loud enough. I think you'll be able to hear me okay.
Everybody hear him okay? Okay.
Next slide. So, this shows a photo of our, I'll call it our flagship project for erosion control, it's on the north side of Star Village, there's about five acres there that's been blown out, and evidence, head cuts and side cuts show that we've probably lost as much as two feet of shale from these slopes over the course of five decades or more, so, you know, a lot of sediment going straight into Rapid Creek. Craig had mentioned this little project with School of Mines, that's kind of a bench scale research project, and haven't had really direct results from that yet, but talk a little about what we're doing here, which, you know, a lot of it has been trial and error, but pretty effective. These are what we call wattles, erosion control socks stuffed with wood chips. This September, we installed about 7,000 feet of those as part of a United Way Day of Carrying project, they lined us up with, you know, about 15 people from National Guard, which was really helpful, so, the intent there, do we have a pointer, by chance, Dan? I'll do without it. Some of these, you'll notice, are oriented somewhat downhill, there's a couple of silt fences, like, oh, in the lower left corner there, another one farther over, these are kind of temporary fixes, filling up with sediment, and, you know, we're intending to try to deflect that sediment off to the side and just keep it on site, buy a little time, and the main intent is, over the course of the next several years, hopefully we can start bringing in massive quantities of topsoil and actually, you know, start topsoiling the main part of it. Did you end up finding a pointer then? No, I can't find one. Doesn't matter, in the meantime, we've chipped away around the edges, there's a head cut all along there where we put in a couple of rows of wattles before to hold things in place, and we've done a little topsoiling by hand, putting yard waste and the like, and it's really held things back, so, next slide shows a project, or, before I go on with that, I'll mention one thing, the landowner, main landowner there managed to give 14 acres to the city there at Star Village, the city owns 12 acres where there's a couple of water reservoirs up there, so, that'll be a city park someday, and, you know, it really, it was a liability before, they tried to give it away and they wouldn't accept it, but because of our efforts, kind of changed the perspective, and so, you know, there's a benefit we never would have imagined at first. So this over at La Croix Links, the disc golf course, about a half acre spot there, and in the lower right, you can see where we put four rows of wattles, that would have been back in 2021, a very dry year. The next slide shows same place in 2022, you can see that things are starting to grow there, just a little bit of sediment catching above those wattles. Next slide then is from this year, and so, sweet clover came in really good, but later this fall, we'll probably finish pepper in that slope, and we may actually cure it as simply as that, time will tell. Next slide, so, we started a new project this year over on the north side of Stevens High, Raider Park it's called, for those of you familiar with it, and there've been a lot of off-road trails in there that were eroding, and two parking lots there that contributing runoff that contributed to the erosion. So the next slide, this is just east of the lower eastern parking lot, and this actually became a little bit of a stormwater mitigation project as well, we ended up building just a very small catchment there, but you can see, you know, we had topsoiled and putting out blanket in there, and I really liked this project because we're able to do it mechanically, you know, basically bobcats and trailer instead of a lot of it by hand. So, next slide, a couple weeks later, you know, it was really taking off, and then the next slide shows another catchment we built up by the upper parking lot, and it was very much spur of the moment, we just had an hour left at the end of the day with bobcats, and we thought, well heck, we could build a little dam here and keep that runoff out of there, well, we didn't have a pipe to put a drain in it, but we've since installed one there, so, anyhow, all these projects, a lot of it has been volunteer labor, and it's actually pretty good work for retirees, you know, most of the working class, you know, have a lot of other things to do, but if you happen to know anybody that might be interested, send them our way. So the next slide, Craig had mentioned this already, we had a previous Director, Ken Steichen was his name, that was a member of this church, and they wanted to do some stormwater mitigation there, you know, recognizing that, you know, stormwater, urban stormwater runoff is really the biggest detriment we've got to water quality and ecosystems in Rapid Creek, you know, all they have to do is go look at the stream during one of our rain events, and it's just progressively dirtier as you go downstream, so, this was an early endeavor, makes a really nice little demonstration project. Next slide shows one of the basins Craig had mentioned, an inventory of impervious surfaces, so, we had done basically two projects with School of Mines, to do it in two phases, eventually ended up inventorying seven of the different basins, primarily ones that had been built before the advent of modern stormwater management practices and requirements, nowadays, if you're going to build impervious, you know, you have to mitigate the stormwater, much of the city has no mitigation, so, the intent here is really to try to identify non-residential areas, you know, we can't worry about roofs and driveways and homes, but, you know, more your non-residential properties, where we might be able to get the most value with the least cost by doing some sort of stormwater mitigation, so, the, basically, the green dots are typically the, perhaps the best opportunities, the red are the worst opportunities, typically that would be something like, you know, let's say the Safeway Complex there at Mountain View, you know, what can you do there, it's all concrete, you know, there's no green space, where could you do anything? So that blue dot, the blue circle around one of the green dots, next slide shows where that's, that's located out just south of Mary Hall Park. Basically, that main complex was game and fish headquarters before they moved here, so it's, it's just a little bit northeast of West Middle School, so it's now occupied by South Dakota Wildland Fire, and then there's two properties shown to the west, and then the right of way there, that's South Street, gravel road there, so, so, one cell there could mitigate four different properties, and Wildland Fire is currently getting ready to build a new building on site, and we've got discussions with them, we're hoping that, you know, we can team up and actually put something in there. So, next slide, kind of a new idea that just, the light kind of clicked on, we had not inventoried the Deadwood Avenue area, but, you know, all the gravel parking lots out there, I'll just be certain that that's one of the heaviest, you know, per acre sediment loads that we would have in the city, and I'm going to spend some time looking around out there and see what we might do. So just a couple more slides, the next one, this is located just east of I-190 on the southeast corner of, of the executive golf course, one day I was playing golf out there, I got to notice that a great big drain outlet drains, you know, a very large neighborhood to the north and east of there, and there's a channel downstream where there'd be plenty of room to put in a little bit of storage and baffling, and, you know, we might be able to accomplish some mitigation for a whole neighborhood there. Next slide is another possibility that's out, basically just north of the northeast corner of Meadowbrook Golf or south of Suzanne, so, ever get a chance to look in there, the, basically, this whole neighborhood to the west, you can kind of see a channel leading there, but, again, that channel, I guess I write the bike path, and every time it rains, you can see that the channel capacity has exceeded and it washes across the bike path there, and it'd be pretty easy to put in a little bit of storage there and accomplish some benefits, so, we'll see how these things shape up, we're really at the, kind of the front end of this, and I guess if people know of opportunities where we might try to do something, we're certainly looking to expand these problems or programs, so, again, come knock on my door. Is, Craig must be in there.
We got any kind of questions?
Got time for a question?
Yeah, time for questions. Questions, comments?
I have a comment or a question.
Sure.
I live in the valley, and at the Steely out there.
Yeah.
It just rolls a whole bunch of dirt.
Steal it.
It's piled all on.
That will in a minute.
There's a weed in there, and it looks like it's very, it's a little, washing down the creek with the rain, if it ever rains hard here.
It, I've looked at that area, and you can definitely see that the rain's chewing away at that ground, there's a lot of erosion occurring there, it's certainly an area, actually, I'll mention, you know, we've done a little bit of looking, there's a lot of drainage problems in Rapid Valley, the Hawthorne ditch was recently abandoned by the irrigators, you know, Dan Malali and I spent a little time out there looking at that with a man named Howard Rice that had been one of the irrigators, looking at, might there be places where, you know, the old ditch could be used as a way to mitigate stormwater, you know, channel it to favorable places, and the whole valley, I mean, there's a lot of drainage issues out there, and it's, it's something bigger than just West Dakota, but we might try to, you know, enter into some discussions with, Pennington County Planning Department is in charge of stormwater management for, you know, that part of town, and there may be some opportunities there.
Thank you.
Are you ready to roll, or?
I think we're ready, Dan.
We'll get out of the way.
Thanks, Dan. And Craig?
Our next presentation is Alisia Retsliff, Retsliff with US Forest Service, and she's going to talk to us. Okay, our next presentation's Alisia Retsliff with the US Forest Service, and we've got some support here from the local office as well onboard, they're going to talk to us about the mineral withdrawals around Pactola Reservoir, and kind of the process and what's going on up there, so, Alisia, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent. Well, good morning, everybody, like Craig said, my name is Alisia Retslaff, I'm a project manager with the Rocky Mountain Regional Office with the US Forest Service, and I'm the project manager, I'm currently leading two withdrawals for the region, one in Colorado and then the Pactola Withdrawal here in South Dakota. With me here today is Toni Strauss, she's the Deputy Forest Supervisor for the Black Hills National Forest, and Heather Noel is also here, she's our current Acting Director of Recreation Lands Minerals and Volunteers for the Rocky Mountain Region. So we've got a quick presentation for you here today, just to talk a little bit about what withdrawals are, what's being proposed with the Pactola Withdrawal, and a little bit about where we are in the process, and then we will open it up to all of you for questions. All right, the true test, can I share my screen, the technology test?
Recording in progress.
Okay, it's working.
All right, it's working, excellent. All right, so, this presentation is about the Pactola Reservoir Rapid Creek Watershed So, what is a withdrawal? A withdrawal is essentially a. is essentially a tool that federal agencies have to close or withhold federal land from certain public land laws and/or mineral laws, so that the land can be dedicated to a certain public purpose or to protect certain public resources on the landscape. Because the withdrawal closes these lands to certain public land laws, it also closes those lands to certain activities. Again, limiting those activities to maintain and protect public resources. Each withdrawal is unique and addresses specific purposes and public resources. So withdrawal authorities, the fun stuff, the laws, the rest, the policy. The authority to withdraw public lands is provided under the Federal Land Policy and Management Act of 1976. There are withdrawals that occurred before that time, but as of 1976, this is the policy that we use for the withdrawals. The Bureau of Land Management is a partner in these withdrawals. I'll explain a little bit more about that in just a moment. So withdrawals are also under the regulations, BLM regulations at 43 CFR Part 23, which is essentially what outlines the withdrawal process and the requirements we have to fulfill as we move through the process. So the Secretary of the Department of the Interior, it has been given the authority under that Federal Land Policy Management Act to approve or deny most withdrawals. And as I mentioned before, the BLM has a, has a role in this. They act as the party that administers the withdrawal process on behalf of the Secretary of the Interior. And then the Forest Service, in this case, because we are the agency that has requested the withdrawal, we will be responsible for preparing environmental analysis, so the National Environmental Policy Act process, or NEPA. And the BLM is a cooperating agency in that environmental analysis. And that environmental analysis is sort of a small piece of this larger withdrawal package that we put together throughout this process. So a few specifics about the Pactola Reservoir Withdrawal. So the Forest Service submitted an application earlier this year in February, requesting that the Secretary of Interior withdraw approximately 20,000, 20,500 acres of national forest system lands that are administered by the Black Hills. As part of this withdrawal process, what sort of kicks it off is we, we prepare an application, we submit it to the BLM, who routes it through their side of the system. And if they approve the application, then we go ahead and publish a notice of withdrawal application in the federal register. In this case, it was published on March 21st, 2023. And that, that notice is important for a couple of reasons. The most important being that it actually initiates a two-year segregation period for the withdrawal process. And what that segregation essentially does is it temporarily closes the lands to those public land laws and/or mineral land laws, sort of to maintain the status quo for a two-year window while the Forest Service in this case and the BLM work through the withdrawal process. That federal register notice also initiates a 90-day comment period that is required for withdrawals. We tacked that onto our public scoping comment period as well. So we sort of combined the NEPA comment period with the withdrawal comment period. So the Pactola Withdrawal is, like I said, located on Black Hills National Forest. It's in Pennington County. It's about 15 miles west of Rapid City. So as I mentioned before, each withdrawal is unique and each withdrawal is requested to protect certain public resources or values. So in the case of the Pactola Withdrawal, this one is to protect cultural and natural resources and protect the water for Rapid City and Ellsworth Air Force Base. As I'm sure most of you know, Pactola Reservoir provides the municipal water supply for, for Rapid City and the Air Force Base. And so the goal here is to protect these resources from the potential effects of mineral exploration and development. So Pactola Reservoir, like I said, it's a watershed that provides drinking water to the communities downstream, including Rapid City and the Air Force Base. It's the largest and deepest reservoir on the Black Hills National Forest, lots of shoreline, deep, 800 acres. And the Pactola Visitor Center sits on the eastern edge of the reservoir and hosts about 50,000 people each summer. So it's a, as we all know, a very popular, beautiful area. It's also an area of great importance to many tribal nations, particularly the Sioux Nation. Tribal consultation for this project is ongoing and input from the tribal nations is being used for development of the environmental assessment. So if granted, the requested withdrawal would withdraw, or again, close, the lands from all forms of entry, appropriation, and disposal under public land laws, location entry and patent under the mining laws, and operation of the mineral leasing and geothermal leasing laws for 20 years. So that's sort of the, the complex description that comes from the regulations. And I'll kind of break it down piece by piece. So this first part would close the lands to all forms of entry, appropriation, and disposal under the public land laws. Essentially means that it would prohibit the sale or exchange of these lands for the duration of the withdrawal. The second sentence there, the location and entry under patent under the mining laws. So this applies to these locatable minerals that are subject to the mining law of 1872. Locatable minerals include things like gold, precious gems, platinum, silver, rare earth minerals. And so what this essentially would do for this, these minerals is it would close these lands to mineral exploration and development and no new mining claims could be located. Last part's pretty similar, but applies to the leasable minerals that are subject to the Mineral Leasing Act of 1920, Mineral Leasing Act for acquired lands of 1947, and then the Geothermal Steam Act. Leasable minerals are the oil, the gas, the coal, and the geothermal. So again, under this component, the land would be closed to mineral exploration and development and no new leases in this case could be issued. The last little bit there, the 20 years is an important piece. So per the Federal Land Policy Management Act, withdrawals approved by the secretary can only be approved for up to 20 years. They can be renewed and often are if the original reasons and need for the withdrawal still exist. So if this withdrawal is approved, in about 19 years, they will, if they fill the need to continue it, then they can extend it another 20 years. Permanent withdrawals require congressional action. So a few nuances of the withdrawals. So they are subject to valid existing rights. So that essentially means that existing authorized activities could continue. Private surface and private minerals are not affected by withdrawals. All the other land management activities, recreation, grazing, bench management, they are not affected by withdrawals. And tribal access and rights are also not affected by withdrawals. So the withdrawal process and key dates, I kind of mentioned little pieces of this. I'll kind of just walk from left to right. As I mentioned, back in February of this year, we submitted that application for the withdrawal. It was accepted and the notice was published on March 21st. We held the 90-day comment period and actually had a couple of meetings. Not sure if any of you were able to attend. We had those in Rapid City. So where we are now is this in the middle where you see the two-year segregation period and environmental review. We're, we're operating in the space underneath that arrow. So we are in the middle of the environmental analysis process. We anticipate having an EA available for public review and comment in spring of 2024. And as I mentioned, there's, there's actually this whole package that gets developed, a withdrawal package and a case file. The environmental analysis is just one component of that package. So over the next several months, we'll be working with the BLM to compile all of the required documentation. We put it together in a case file and then we eventually ship it off to the Secretary of the Interior for review. So we anticipate now, sort of shifting over to the far right of the arrow. Like I said, we are, we plan on wrapping up the NEPA in the spring and then we will have the package in early summer that we plan to submit to the secretary. So the secretary uses all of that information to make a decision on the withdrawal. The secretary can decide to approve in whole or in part, or deny the withdrawal. If it's approved, it's published, a public land order is published in the federal register. There's also a federal register notice if the secretary decides to deny the withdrawal. So if approved, then the withdrawal will officially be in place for a term of 20 years. And I mentioned right now, we're in this two-year segregation period that started on March 21st. If the secretary does not make a decision prior to the end of that, the segregation ends, but the decision can still be made. However, we're, with the rate at which we're moving through the process and the awesome team we have working on this, we will be well within that segregation period to submit the package. And then that last bit, the two-year segregation cannot be extended. So that is Pactola Withdrawal in a nutshell. So I will go ahead and turn it over to all of you for any questions.
Any questions? Somebody have a question?
I was wondering, I've been Googling some and I know Google only give all 90% correct, but it said, it said a couple of heap leaching mine, drilling for gold in the Pactola water area, what do you call it?
It's cutting out a little bit. I can't quite hear. Craig, could you repeat the question?
I'm not sure he's finished with the question.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Pick up your mic, Rob.
Just pick, you got a mic right there. Just speak into that mic.
Well, speaking to the mic, maybe this will work better.
Oh, I, I Googled and they said there's a couple of companies that are going to start drilling at Pactola for gold in, in the watershed area, or whatever they call it. And they use heap leaching mines and they always leak and they always blew water. So I just thought I'd, am I right on that? Does anybody know?
So his question deals with the ongoing exploration and proposals for some heap leaching mines that are currently in, in place in Pactola, in that watershed evidently?
Yes. So any exploration or development that has an existing authorization can continue. So if that project or what you're speaking to is already active, people are out there on the ground, that activity can continue.
It's my understanding that what's going on up there right now is strictly exploration, not, not a proposed mine. Is that correct?
In the project area?
Yes.
I'd actually return to Toni if you know what's going on up there. But like I said, so exploration also has to be approved. So if the project, if folks came through and worked through the Forest Service and they've been authorized to be out there exploring presently, they can continue that exploration.
But not, but not mine it, right?
Ah, the complexities of mining law. So in that case, what occurs is if the exploration, they found something and they wanted to develop, they have to go through the process where essentially they have to, if they want to develop, they have to prove that there is a valuable mineral deposit on that claim. So there has to be a discovery of that valuable mineral deposit. That's a whole separate process from withdrawals. If it is determined that there is a valuable mineral deposit there as they go through that process, then that could be determined to be a valid existing right and can move forward. But it goes through sort of its separate own process.
Thank you. Scott, go ahead.
Rather than go through this whole process, could you not seek congressional authorization right now for withdrawal? And have you talked to South Dakota's delegation about this?
Can you repeat the beginning again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, rather than go through this whole bureaucratic process within the Forest Service and Interior, could you not just directly approach the Congress at this point and seek withdrawal? And have you talked to South Dakota's congressional delegation about doing so?
Heather, do you know any bit about this? Do you know, thus far, we have, I guess, yeah, Heather, do you know anything about this?
Can you repeat the question?
Okay, so I, I guess the question, if I can try to summarize it, is, you know, why not go through the congressional process now? And have you approached that or considered that?
So by law, this is the process that we have to follow to, to withdraw the lands. So we can flush that answer out better for you, but this is the process that, that makes the most sense, working with the BLM and her direction. So I can get that back to you, Craig, and be able to, unless Toni, if you have anything else.
I guess my, my question is, does the law require you to go through this bureaucratic procedure first before you could seek congressional authorization for withdrawal? Or could you just start by seeking congressional authorization?
And actually, we could, go ahead, Toni.
I was just going to say, it's my understanding that we could seek the congressional delegation for a permanent withdrawal. Whether or not our congressmen have been approached for this project, I am not sure. I guess I can share that Jewel Cave has requested additional withdrawal areas to protect Jewel Cave under Forest Service resources and they would like that to be permanent. So I have approached our congressional staffers to see what the congressmen would think about pursuing that route before we submit an application for a withdrawal around Jewel Cave. So in that regard, I'm just waiting on that one. But the Pactola Withdrawal was really handled at a higher level than before. So I can't answer whether or not the congressmen were approached for a permanent withdrawal on this one or other.
Thank you, Toni. And sometimes it is that which, which route of the two makes the most sense for the communities on the ground for the process, to get that information out, and also the expediency of being able to perform a withdrawal. So that just made the most sense, I think, in the, but yes, we, we actually have those two routes. You're correct.
And if at any point, even if we move forward and this, what we call an administrative withdrawal is approved, if the decision were made and Toni and others worked with the congressional and they wanted to move forward with making it permanent, they could do so. A permanent withdrawal would, would, what's the word, supersede an administrative withdrawal? And in fact, we have a, a similar situation with the withdrawal in Colorado where that's exactly what's happening. There's some interest in making it permanent. We're moving forward with administrative. They can happen concurrently.
Given what's at stake here, it would just seem more logical to go the quicker route and avoid a lot of the hassle of trying to get an administrative withdrawal in place. And we're protecting the watershed for major water projects for Rapid City and Ellsworth.
Yeah. No, that does, in many cases, that does make sense. I think the administrative withdrawals, while temporary, I have found to actually move through the process quite quickly. It's a, it's really a tool that's designed for that purpose. And I think with the more permanent withdrawals that, you know, the congressionally approved, those can actually take quite a bit longer. And so in this case, being able to move forward, we can put it in, you know, if approved, we can put it in place for 20 years. In the meantime, if they would like to be working on making it permanent, they can do so.
Any more questions from the audience? I guess there's, seeing none, I guess, thank you for your presentation and we'll move on to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Uh huh.
Yep, you get the video back.
How late is it? What time is it?
Yeah, it's 9:23.
Right on schedule. Okay. Who's next? Cheryl's next. Western Dakota Regional Water System. Our next presentation is Western Dakota Regional Water System. Cheryl, I understand you're giving the presentation today?
Don't make it just start. Good morning, everyone. I'm Cheryl Chapman, Executive Director of Western Dakota Regional Water. And thank you again for the opportunity to update you on the progress of the proposed new water system to bring additional water west river. And want to especially thank West Dakota Water Development District, who was really the catalyst for taking a look at this particular issue and continuing to support the efforts of Western Dakota Regional Water. Next slide. Before we get into some of the information on the project, I just thought I would share with you a quick timeline. It's hard to believe that it's been almost four years since the report was presented to West Dakota Water Development District, asking about their renewal for their future use water permit, which was referenced earlier in the program today. West Dakota received that 10,000 acre feet per year future use permit when the Black Hills Conservancy Subdistrict was dissolved and the new Water Development Districts were formed. And it was renewed on a regular basis, but at one point, this board asked for some information on whether they really needed it to be renewed. And South Dakota Mines brought that information back, which started more inquiries and ultimate formation of Western Dakota Regional Water. And so it was actually December of 2019 that that report came in. The group decided to do a survey of potential stakeholders. And you might recall, too, in early 2020 is when COVID started. And so all of this was done with phone calls and informational meetings with Zoom. And the group came back, who had been meeting informally, and made a recommendation about moving ahead, looking at governance, a new nonprofit to take the lead on it, since West Dakota Water Development District had indicated it was not the right fit for them. Also, working on more technical assessments and looking for funding. That rolled into '21, in which a lot of the communities, water systems, tribal members had come together and talked about what it would mean to create a nonprofit. And much of '21 was dedicated to that. And a new nonprofit was created in September of 2021. Also during that time, there was movement on new federal funding for infrastructure projects. And so once incorporated, Western Dakota moved ahead with an application to get on the state water plan, which was done successfully, and then also had the first annual meeting and water summit. In '22, then, with the receipt of ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds, the board that was created during the incorporation was able to move ahead with competitively hiring an engineering team and Destin, who you met earlier, is part of the A2S team, who is taking the lead on that. And continued to create a plan for how to do a feasibility study for a project of this magnitude. And that work has continued. And in '23, then, we also were able to receive $1 million in state funding under the State Water Resources Management Program, SWARMs for short. And with that, some local funding was raised to help provide the match that is required for that funding. Earlier this year in September, we had our third annual meeting, and we were pleased for all the folks with reclamation to have the regional director as our keynote speaker during that meeting. Next slide. So again, how did it all get started? It was that question about renewing the future use permit that happened at the West Dakota table. And turned to South Dakota Mines and asked for information on whether that permit was needed. And the report came back and said, yes, I would renew that and also perhaps get busy working on building something. And so that's what kicked off a lot of that conversation. And it was important to bring communities all across western South Dakota together because no one community can really build a project of the magnitude to bring Missouri River water to western South Dakota by themselves. Next slide. This particular graph is a demand versus water availability graph that was developed in the South Dakota Mines report. What it showed, and what really got people's attention, was that those horizontal lines represented available water. The green one in the middle is average water availability. The top blue one is during wet years. We're probably in between those two this year with all the precipitation. But what was of particular interest is the red line, which is during drought conditions and the amount of water available for the population at that point in time. The black inclined line represents the demand. The black line that is solid was actual use. Numbers were received on how much water was used in the area of Pennington County. And then the dash line projected, based on population estimates and that sort of thing, back in that 2019 timeframe, of what they thought growth would be. And what that showed was that if you had average growth and average demand, that you would have plenty of water for 100 years. But as many people recognize, average isn't what we always work on or design for, especially as engineers. We have to look at extreme conditions. And so we took a look also at the year 2020 on that bottom access and realized that had we been in drought that year, that our demand would have exceeded the water that was available at that point in time. And that's a very important point because that ultimately allowed us to successfully apply for ARPA funding with the state of South Dakota because we had a current need for water, not a future need. Next slide. We also... Oh, I'm sorry, Dan, if you don't mind going back one more time. This is actually an updated slide. Dr. Kurt Katzenstein, who was the lead author on this study, updated this graph in August of this year. And what we saw is that that demand curve actually go to the left or be a higher demand than what was originally projected. If we are at somewhere at 2% growth rather than the dash line that was there, all of a sudden, we see that if we had average precipitation, we would be short of water in the year 2060 instead of the year 2120. And then, of course, if we were in more of a drought condition, it only gets more severe in terms of the water availability for the current population. And these numbers were based upon some of the population counts and projections that have come recently from the census and Elevate. Next slide. And we know that more folks are coming. The Ellsworth Air Force Base is designated to be the home of the new B-21 bomber. And not only will it be a base for those exercises, but we also know that we will have the training facility for that. And so the numbers we realize for active duty personnel at different times have had different projections, but around 3,000 has been a common number. And then we multiply that, of course, by what size family comes with those folks and other support services that are developed in support of this overall mission. Next slide. The report that came from the ad hoc group in late 2020, who had taken the information from the School of Mines report and talked about what it would mean for their communities, came together with these recommendations about governance, a new nonprofit, technical evaluations to continue, and then looking at funding. Next slide. And so... Well, let's see. Yep, let's go there. So in '21, as we worked together on that idea for a nonprofit corporation, the group came together and decided that there would be two classes of membership, a voting class and a non-voting class. If you were operating a water system and delivering water to a community and constituents, you would be a voting member. If you were a county commission or an economic development group and just wanted to support the efforts, then you would be a non-voting member. And the name was decided upon to be Western Dakota Regional Water. And the Board of Directors can be as low as five people or as great as nine, and that group meets monthly. Next slide. And you can see the membership right here. And we have three other communities who are pending, and there is not a timeline or a deadline to join as a member. But so we're continually updating this list, but you get a sense that you have large communities, very small communities, and then the associate members, of which West Dakota is an associate member as well, are those groups that are helping move things along. We also have the ability for individual members, and as you can see, we have a couple of those folks here as well. Next slide. Our Board of Directors... Oh, okay. There we go. At our recent annual meeting, there were, the Board of Directors was elected. And as you can see here, Doug Curry is present. He's Public Works Director in Box Elder. Dale Teck, Public Works for City of Rapid City. Mayor Teresa Hall, City of New Underwood. Jake Fitzgerald, West River Lyman Jones. Nick Broyles, Public Works Director in Spearfish. And new to the board is Todd Williamson with Butte Mead Sanitary Water District and Jim Martin, Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District. So again, large and small urban and rural systems represented on the board. Next slide. To be a member, we have the ability, of course, to attend the annual meeting. We oftentimes put an educational program in conjunction with the annual meeting, which is open to the public. We had 90 folks attend that in Spearfish in September. The voting members have also been weighing in on any business items and the election of board members. The terms are three years, and they are staggered. And so I will have either two or three board member openings this coming year. One of the things that we have recognized has been so important is to communicate what's happening with this idea. And so we have started a website, newsletters. Also, just getting started this fall, are a couple of informational programs. One is, the first one is this Friday at noon, and we call it a board briefing. And it is for the members to be able to have a deeper dive into the business of western Dakota. We'll talk about task orders and progress on those and those kinds of things for those members who would like that in-depth information. But we also have, in the first one of these quarterly technical sessions, as we call them, was the first Friday in October, is bringing in technical experts to talk about different aspects of the project. At our first one, Corey Churney with A2S, who's our program manager, did a program on how a large project is planned and ultimately built, and talking about all aspects of that work. The one that is coming up in January, again, it is the first Friday in January, will feature West River legislators talking about, hopefully, pending water legislation in the 2024 legislature. Next slide. The technical evaluation was another important recommendation that came out of that early group of communities meeting together. And we have, we just show a map a little bit on the top of this slide, just to make sure folks understand that getting from idea to a project that's built and operating is not a straight line. It's a winding road that takes into account many ideas from communities. It involves people talking about what's important to their communities, what is needed for water resiliency, ideas for conservation, on how water can be conserved to the greatest degree possible to minimize the need for additional water. We are in the process of canvassing many of the water systems in western South Dakota. And yes, that number is right up there. There are 350 in western South Dakota. Some large, some small. I know Mark Mayer with DNR has been before the West Dakota Board, talking about how important it is to get those systems permitted and reporting and that sort of thing to make sure good quality water is brought to homeowners in particular across western South Dakota. And so we continue to gather information on this. One of the ideas that we're just talking with Black Hills Council of Local Governments on are some ideas in which we can engage members, especially those, if you're in a rural subdivision, how do you have the reassurance that if something happens to your well or your pump, that you'll have water for all of the residents in your area? So we're working on some ideas where we can bring people together. Western Dakota is all about bringing bulk water to people. In other words, delivering large quantities to existing systems. We are not delivering water to individuals, to ranches, what have you. And so we need to find ways to work together with the existing water systems to effectively bring that water that is needed to back up their systems, or in some cases, replace it. One of the other technical projects we're looking at right now are options for intakes in the Missouri River. And we're looking right at the O'Wahy Dam area. There was an old Bureau of Reclamation facility constructed and was near completion in the '70s, and then the project was deauthorized and work stopped. I had a chance with, again, the folks with reclamation, to visit that site this summer. to visit that site this summer. And it's like, the day the word came, people left everything in place and went home. There's still filing cabinets there and you name it. But it's a huge facility that was to withdraw water to be used for irrigation in Eastern South Dakota. So that intake is in place. And one of the ideas that we're looking at is could it be used for a project such as this? We don't know yet. Lots of work to be done. But other locations up and downstream from that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we want to continue to bring... Continue to get the word out as much as possible. So next slide. Thank you, Dan. As we take a look at this, the headlines from the southwestern part of the United States and western parts of the U.S. as well have... The headlines have always talked about lack of water in rivers and reservoirs throughout those areas during drought. And so we took a look at the lowest numbers ever recorded in the Missouri River, both up in the North Dakota area as well as leaving South Dakota. And then said, if that were a condition, how does that compare to the water that might be needed for Western South Dakota? And we took existing numbers and calculated that for every gallon of water that goes down the Missouri River, a tablespoon of that water would be required to serve all of Western South Dakota. We are certainly blessed with a huge water resource, a huge catchment area and watershed that extends all the way up to Montana and down the river. And so just wanted to share that data with you as well. Of course, not all of this water is for drinking water. Under the Pick-Sloan Act, also known as the Flood Control Act, that ultimately built the main stem dams, there are other authorized purposes for Missouri River water, hydropower, recreation, and so forth. And so that water is shared. But certainly, this gives you a sense of how much water is available in the Missouri River even under drought conditions. Next slide. This gives you a sense of all those dots are water systems we're talking to. And as you can see, they span all of Western South Dakota. There's not a hard and fast boundary, if you will, for what the service area could be for Western Dakota. We'll let the numbers tell the story and communities step up to decide whether or not they would like to be ultimately in a service area. Next slide. And finally, we're also very pleased that the USGS and Galen is a big part of that and his team and taking a look at what is happening with water in groundwater and surface water throughout Western South Dakota and in particular, the Black Hills area, which, as you can see, spills over, as you know, into Wyoming. So we are on... Just wrapping up Task 1 and taking a look at Task 2 and 3 to have that data. But we know that an independent look at that water availability and where it is in the region is really important to our technical analysis. As we go through the NEPA process, as we heard from the withdrawals earlier today with the U.S. Forest Service, our NEPA process will require us to take a look at different alternatives, which will include other water sources other than just the Missouri River. So a lot of good, basic data will have to be compiled. And the USGS has... Is gathering a lot of that information. And hopefully, it can be that kind of data collection and analysis that's an ongoing process, not just a snapshot in time, if you will. Next slide. Again, with funding, that was that third recommendation coming back to West Dakota back in 2020. We received from the state legislature that $8 million in ARPA money, $1 million in SWARMs money already, and over $300,000 in local contributions. But what we're taking a look at really is a request to Congress to authorize a feasibility study. And that would be allowing us to work with Bureau of Reclamation in really understanding, is this a feasible project? What would it take? What would it cost to build and operate such a system as this? And so we are working hard on that with the continuing resolution and other aspects of Congress. We're not sure exactly when that might happen, but we're eager to be able to work more actively with Reclamation. And finally, also, we will be looking at a 2024 funding from the legislature for the SWARMs funding again, which will require a local match. This, again, continues to help support our efforts in developing the feasibility study. And so at this point, then, I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Cheryl?
Yes.
How much water flows out of the Black Hills annually into the Missouri River right now?
I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
Wouldn't that be good to know since we're essentially looking at bringing that water back to the Black Hills?
In a way, everything that we send is recycled back into the Missouri River. But we're hoping to get a lot of that data updated, you know, through the studies that we'll be doing.
Are you looking at capturing that water before it gets to the river?
Which water are you talking about?
Water coming out of the Black Hills. Before it even gets to there.
You're talking about...
Capture it and keep it here.
Building reservoirs.
Yeah, building reservoirs.
Yeah, that'll have to be some of the alternatives that we would take a look at.
Thank you.
Yes.
On this plot here, those curves that you added?
Yes.
Is that for Western South Dakota growth?
It goes beyond Pennington County. These numbers are from Elevate, but certainly include Pennington County and the Rapid City, Box Elder areas as well. And Dr. Katzenstein put that together. And we could get a little bit more detail from him for you as well.
It looks like it changed things quite a bit.
It has changed things a lot. We were... We knew there had been increasing numbers and demand. When we saw the graph ourselves, we were, I would say, a little surprised to see how dramatically it changed what that demand curve looked like.
Yeah, I would just add that. I think the big thing is that projected demand was done on 2019 growth numbers. I think everyone in this room has seen what the region's done since 2019. So it's surprising to see but not unexpected.
Cheryl, I know it's preliminary, but are you looking at drawing raw water and pumping it out here and having the systems to have their own treatment systems? Or is it going to be a treatment plant there at O'Wahy?
Great question. That is exactly one of the things we're working on determining. And as we talk to all the systems, you know, that is a question we ask about, is raw water, treated water preferred? If we're looking at a lot of smaller systems, even if they're grouped together, most of those would not have a treatment plant. You know what I'm saying? And so it's an evaluation. It'll be part of that alternative analysis, again, that we'll be taking a hard look at. So, but I think...
How about on the other end? Are you going to take a look at the cost of treatment of the water that's brought in before it's dumped back into the system? You bring water out to a community, they run it through their residences and businesses. They've got to treat it somehow before they dump it back into the Cheyenne or Rapid Creek or Belle Fouch. Have you looked at the cost of what that's going to be?
Well, communities are already doing that with their existing water sources, of course. And South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources is just completing a study looking at wastewater issues, I'll say, within kind of our general metro area. Think of like Piedmont to New Underwood. And as we all know, there's a lot of septic tanks in those areas and looking at policies along those lines. And even before additional water shows up on the scene, you know, the water that are... That is being gotten for those folks out of existing wells or what have you, that wastewater is definitely a topic to be addressed. But I would say that is not our primary focus. We're trying to keep focused just on the water. But we're very much closely watching all of that as well. So, and I think, Cheryl...
Just a quick question. Are your meetings open to the public?
They... That question has not come up. It is a nonprofit corporation. We meet by Zoom. And our members have a chance. As one of the reasons we wanted to do these board briefings on a quarterly basis is to just fill everybody in on the sorts of tasks we're working on right now and that sort of thing. So...
Any more questions for Cheryl? Looks like none, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your interest and support.
You bet. Thank you for coming. Let's see, actually. How long is your presentation? We'll go ahead and do the presentation for the USGS and then take a break. Well, he is, but he's going to be 10:15. So we're just trying to make... We want to get a break in before he comes on, so...
Oh, he can be done by 10:15, that's fine. I might grab a chair. Hi, everyone.
Do you need a mic?
Yeah.
Probably because we're recording.
So we have Galen Hooshaw with the U.S. Geological Survey, Dakota Water Science Center. Here to give you kind of a rapid-fire overview of all of our projects, West River, South Dakota. Of course, the Dakota Water Science Center, we cover North and South Dakota, so Eastern South Dakota, Eastern North Dakota, Western North Dakota, all covered within our programs. But here, just kind of focusing on Western South Dakota. So let's go, next slide. Can I pick it up? Does this work better? I'm going to sit down. How about that? How's this? Is this okay? I know. We'll try it this way. All right, so four main topics, stream gauging groundwater program, some water quality projects at Ellsworth and some others around the Black Hills. And as Cheryl just mentioned, a couple of projects on Black Hills water use and modeling efforts, and then tribal programs. So, next slide, please. So before we kind of jump in, just wanted to point out a few current, past projects that we had with West Dakota Water Development District. This is on some of the earlier slides this morning. But we appreciate the ability to work with West Dakota through stream gauging programs, past water quality work with the Canyon Lake dredging project, and then going back several years ago with onsite wastewater or septic system research. And back in the '90s, West Dakota was a major sponsor for the Black Hills hydrology study projects. And beyond just working with West Dakota, I just want to extend a, you know, note of appreciation for everybody in this room, I think. If I look around, every entity represented here has been a supporter or worked with USGS on either data collection or interpretive science projects here in the state. So thank you for your support. It wouldn't be possible for us to do what we do without your support. So thank you to everybody here today. Let's go to the next one. So stream gauging and groundwater monitoring. Next slide. Just a quick overview of sites on our map. Of course, there's a whole bunch of sites in the Black Hills. We've got about 80 year-round stream flow gauging stations across the state. And then 80-plus additional sites are stage-only, annual peak, precip gauges. We've got a MET-WAR network in the Black Hills region to help target flash flooding concerns during the summer months. So there's lots of different kind of types of stream gauges depending on what the needs are for the particular drainage. I'll point out a few newer stream gauges that have come online. I guess the... I don't have a map showing these, but just going down the list. And if you have any questions about details of stream gauging programs, contact Steve Fuller in our office, who's our data chief. So just kind of representing Steve's and giving a few updates. So he wanted me to mention Annie Creek's a new one that's back up online. This was formerly... So this is along Spearfish Canyon. This is one that was down since about 2019. It was discontinued, and we got it back online thanks to help from the U.S. Forest Service on sponsoring that gauge. So Annie Creek is now a full-time year-round stream gauge with precip also. Sturgis has three new sites installed in 2022. So that's been online for a couple of years. Again, a lot of these kind of come in in response to major flooding events or something that kind of triggers a need for it. So after some flooding in Sturgis a couple of years back, we worked with them to get a few more sites installed there. City of Somerset's been expanding and putting in a few sites. We've got groundwater sites, actually, a couple of groundwater sites that are available on the web centered around the... What's that development called? Colton? Sun Valley Estates area. And that's along Stage Barn Canyon. And we're... We've got a... Working on a proposed, actually, a stream flow site there in Stage Barn Canyon in that Sun Valley Estates area as well. So excited to get... Work with them on getting a new site put in there. Also working with Deadwood to get in some more... Another site along Whitewood Creek. That's proposed. Kind of still in the works on that one, but that could be another useful one in Deadwood. And then last one I'll mention is Mount Rushmore. We've got a spring flow site and doing some groundwater levels at Mount Rushmore that will have some data. Go ahead, go to the next slide. Kind of a good transition to our groundwater network. We've got about 46 year-round groundwater level stations along the... Highlight the Rapid City area. Many of these wells along the... Basically, the I-90 corridor intended to look at Madison, Minnalausa, Minnacata Wells help look at our water supply for the city of Rapid City and other communities along there. And across the state, you can see a big chunk along Roseweb has a bunch of wells and among Sioux Falls, there's a bunch of wells too. So kind of scattered throughout the state, but we've got a bit of a groundwater network there as well. Should point out, you know, this... These are just USGS monitoring efforts. Of course, this is supplementing the state's... Geological Survey has their own groundwater monitoring network as well. So the two kind of... The two entities, I think we work in tandem to help assess groundwater levels across the state. So again, just to kind of point out that we're not alone in doing this kind of stuff. We work hand-in-hand with other entities on this. Next slide. Just some... Pointing out a few trends in groundwater. This is just the kind of data we can get from it. So with water supply and talking about regional water systems, we're again looking for the drought period. So we're just highlighting some of the lower periods of groundwater that we can see in the early 2000s, mid-2000s. As recently as 2019, we reached an all-time high for some of our groundwater levels in the Black Hills. So that's the kind of the sort of information that we were hoping to gather from these groundwater monitoring efforts. Next slide, please. Data access to websites. We've updated a few of our websites and added some new tools and cool stuff for accessing our data recently. So I'll just say, if you've played with any of these things or want me to give you some more of a demo later this morning or some other time to get ahold of me, I've got a tablet here. We can do some... Kind of play with it a little bit today if we need to. NWS, so National Water Information System is our main database. We've recently updated the interface a couple of years ago. So still taking some, getting used to it, but there's a lot of new tools and features that we can use with that. NWS Mapper is... NWS Mapper is, it's kind of where I tell people to start if you don't know what you're looking for. NWS Mapper is like a Google Maps interface. You can zoom in on a, on a spot that, okay, I'm interested in this area, see what sites are there, click on the map, pulls up whatever you want. So when in doubt, I always tell people just put in USGS NWS Mapper and then go from there. Next slide. National Water Dashboard is another interface that was launched a couple of years ago. What's cool about this is this integrates weather and water. So it integrates weather information from National Weather Service, flood stages, flood warnings from National Weather Service. So especially during periods of flooding, this is a nice interface for checking flood status and kind of weather information for areas that might be experiencing some flooding conditions. So National Water Dashboard. Next slide, please. Okay, USGS HighVis, so this is basically cameras, so stream gauge cameras. This is something that we just got in the Dakotas this last year. We've got twenty-two cameras so far. Let's go to the next slide. So HighVis is hydrologic image visualization, something or other. It's cameras, so HighVis means cameras. In the Rapid City area, we've got a stream, a stream gauge camera on Founder's Park area. So this is Rapid Creek in Rapid City. And then there's another one, Rapid Creek above Canyon Lake. So we've got two stream gauge cameras here in Rapid City. I guess the other uses for this are some of one, public communications kind of helps show the public what's going on, especially with flood warnings, that sort of thing. From our side, from the gauge operation maintenance, it helps save costs associated with unnecessary trips to sites, especially during, for sites that might have ice buildup or other maintenance issues. We can pull up the camera and see if something stands out and save, maybe help us save a trip out to the site so we can get some more value there. It also aids our staff processing of the discharge records. So especially for, again, flood, high and low events, if you've got floods, it kind of gives you a timestamp of what's the high watermark at that time. So these, most sites take a picture every hour, around the hour. So it's hourly timestamps. You can go through the websites and for each camera and do some cool stuff. You can do time lapse imagery, you can tie the picture to the stage and kind of see how the, get a, get a time lapse of how the different stages look for different, different pictures. So cool stuff. Go check out USGS HighVis for cameras. Next slide. Here's a couple of pictures of Spearfish Creek. That's a camera up in Spearfish, so let's go. This is at, this last summer at about five o'clock. This is right before a flood event. Let's go to the next picture, and that was an hour later. So this captured a flash flood that happened in the Spearfish Park. See, if you were sitting on that bench, you'd probably get your feet wet. Next slide. Similar, this was just a few weeks ago, Cheyenne River in Owasta, another one of our sites. This was October 11th, kind of base flow conditions. Notice that rock in the middle of the channel. Let's just see what, how tall I can almost reach this. Look at that rock right there. It's probably about a foot or so out of the water. Next slide, disappears, flows went up to, I don't know how much they increased. I should have had that number handed, but it was a lot. So just kind of cool to visualize some of these, these flooding events as, as they happen. Let's go to the next slide. So we've got, go through a few of our water quality projects. And is Mark calling in right at 10:15 or?
We're calling him.
Yeah, we're calling him? Okay. I'll probably give him till like 10:20, if that's all right. Okay. Water quality at, let's start with Ellsworth Air Force Base, so next slide. So just a quick overview, most everybody in the room knows what Ellsworth is. Couple miles east of Rapid City. Similar to really every air force base, there's a history of spills, whether it's fuel spills, any kind of contaminant that gets spilled on air force bases has some kind of remediation effort that's tied to it. So in the past couple of years, as PFAS has become more heavily regulated and of a more of an environmental concern, that's been the focus. We began working at Ellsworth in cooperation with AFKEC, the Air Force Civil Engineering Center out of Texas. We began working with cooperation with AFKEC on Ellsworth beginning about 2020 on this kind of phase of the project. So in addition to working with AFKEC, we're closely with the Ellsworth environmental staff on base here. Next slide. So phase one, if we want to call it that, are the kind of the first effort is we did a lot of geophysics works to help delineate the groundwater flow path. So thanks to Colton and other, other members of our staff here in Rapid City, we did some geophysics works to really help define which way the groundwater is going to flow around Ellsworth. The situation, the groundwater situation around Ellsworth is you've got pure shales down the basement rock, and then above that you've got some superficial deposits that any contamination that might flow into these superficial deposits, they're going to hit the pure shale and they're going to run off downstream towards Box Elder, so Box Elder Creek. So that's kind of the purpose of doing these delineations is to help get a better idea of conceptual site models and which way groundwater is going to flow, which way contaminants are going to move. So if we call that phase one, we've got a bunch of products out, some really cool maps that help show fill depth of pure shale and things like that. So we've got most of those products wrapped up. Now we're into, next slide, doing more of the, kind of the water quality assessment and helping understand things that are going on with the water quality on the south side of the state. So there's many other efforts and contractors that are working on base. Our work is mostly focusing on kind of this off-base stuff as water drains to the south towards Box Elder Creek. So we've got a couple of sites set up on Box Elder Creek, a couple tributaries that drain into Box Elder Creek, and then a couple of groundwater wells along Box Elder Creek. So groundwater and surface water in this area of South of Ellsworth. Next slide. Just a couple of pictures showing our sites. This is at Box Elder Creek at the I-90 service road. So this is the upstream site. You can see we've got a crew set up there. We're sampling for a whole bunch of stuff. You know, it's not just PFAS, it's VOCs, it's wastewater compounds, nutrients, inorganics, everything that you can think of, we're, we're filling water bottles and getting them tested for. So there's kind of our typical setup. Let's go to the next slide. Stream sites in Box Elder, very kind of, most of you are familiar with Box Elder Creek. It can go dry, it's mostly weightable, just a few feet across. So we're able to get in there and do our sampling there. We do have some real-time stream gauges set up at two sites on Box Elder Creek, so that information is available during the summer months. So that's a, that's a stream gauge there on 151st Ave. Let's go to the next slide. Just a couple of notes on PFAS challenges. So for anybody that's worked with PFAS sampling or water quality stuff, the big challenge is no Teflon materials in the equipment. PFAS is a component of Teflon or Teflon contains PFAS, I should say. So we have to be careful of, you know, bottles and collection equipment, make sure there's no Teflon in there. There's kind of an evolving method for, for how we measure PFAS. Right now, we're using a, the Department of Defense actually specifies the method 1633, which is somewhat different than, or there's a couple of different options for lab methods. So obtaining laboratory services for PFAS is often challenging. It's not as standardized across, across the nation as we think it, think it out of it. Again, there's kind of evolving or complicated regulatory status. The latest proposed guidance came out this last spring, I think March 2023. And it's, you know, it's not as simple as one compound has this number. It's a series of six compounds, and within those six compounds, each number, each compound has a different number tied to it. You put ratios in there, it's, it's kind of a mess. So it's, it's a little hard to communicate this kind of stuff to the public. But it's a, yeah, so like I said, it's kind of, to summarize, it's a challenge, but it can be that. Next slide. So timeline, again, we're doing some data collection for the next year and then hopefully do some reporting 24, 25 on the water quality stuff that kind of ties up everything we've got on that. So unfortunately, we don't have a lot of the data back from the lab ready to share today, but we're working on that, hopefully have that, have kind of some intermediate results in the next year or so. Next slide. Just a quick note on a few other water quality projects in the hills. Rapid Creek and Mount Rushmore, we have a similar program set up at both sites, sampling four times per year roughly April through October. And again, mentioning, comparing this to DNR programs, this is not intended to replace, but to supplement DNR water quality monitoring sites. So we've got, for Rapid Creek, there's a site right above Pactola at Silver City. That's, we're doing four times per year. And in Mount Rushmore, we're doing kind of the same schedule for some of their tributaries as it flows into the Battle Creek drainage. Next slide. Go ahead, next slide. So Black Hills water use, as Cheryl just mentioned, we are involved with the West Dakota Regional Water System to help compile some water use information, hopefully get out some water availability estimates as part of that project. So Cheryl kind of alluded to, there's these tasks, one, two, three. Basically, task one is data collection. So we're, we're in the process of collecting information about water use for communities and suppliers in the Black Hills right now. And if you look at the picture there, there's another member of our staff, Todd Anderson, visiting the city of Belle Fouch. What we've been doing the last year is visiting these communities and basically digitizing water use records, pumping records to get a better refinement of what are the actual water use estimates in the Black Hills region. And that information can be used to analyze trends, look at, you know, correlations to population, seasonality, weather conditions, that sort of thing. All this kind of builds into the legwork, the foundation for planning the West Dakota Regional Water System project. Go to the next slide. I'll probably skip over some of these. Go ahead, next slide. In water systems, there's been forty-three municipalities or units or systems that we've collected for, or that we've identified. We've completed thirty-two of these this, over the last year. That represents about ninety percent of the population of Black Hills. So we've got a pretty good coverage of the Black Hills region as far as population goes, but there's a little bit more work to be done just to finish that up and then hopefully get, get working on a kind of a publication that summarizes this, this project. So next slide. This is just kind of an example, this is a preliminary plot that just kind of shows some of the information that we're hoping to get out of this. We're still working on making this a final product, but this is just showing the two lines. It's kind of hard to see, but water use versus population. So that's a big question is if we've got, population is increasing and there's various ways to estimate how the population will change in the next twenty, thirty years, how does water use correlate to that? So the goal of our project is to try to find, get actual data that ties water use statistics to population numbers to other causal variables and see how those two things relate to. So this is just an example for Rapid City water use and population, some interesting stuff. And kind of the first look at this tells us that maybe population isn't directly related to water use and that's because of things like weather patterns, how much precip did you get? If you get more precip, then you're, then you're not watering as much. There's conservation measures, there's a whole bunch of things that go into this. So this is the kind of example of the, the things that we're thinking about working on. Next slide. Next slide. So again, next steps, we're just trying to wrap that up in the next year or so to get some, get, get a product out there that summarizes that, the water use estimate, sir. Last topic, I've got two minutes, is what I'm going to say. Overview of some tribal programs that we're, that we're working on. So in the Dakotas, we've got all the tribal lands across the Dakotas. I put them on the map here. West River, South Dakota, of course, Vallesue, Rosebud, Sandy Rock, Cheyenne. So they're all kind of listed on the map there. Just want to kind of show you an example of things that we're working with for some of these tribal partners here. Next slide, please. It's kind of hard to see, but it's just kind of a, it's a listing of, on the left side is each, each tribe name. And then on the top, the different things that we're working on with tribal communities are groundwater well inventories, groundwater level monitoring networks, groundwater mapping or trends modeling. And then last, to our stream flow and water quality monitoring programs. So this is just a matrix that kind of shows for all the tribes across the Dakotas, we're trying to check all the boxes and make sure that we're representing, working with our tribal partners for these groundwater, water quality, stream flow, monitoring projects. Stream Flow Network is of course the one that's the most, most represented. In progress, we've got a whole bunch of groundwater well inventories, which, if you're not familiar with groundwater well inventories, we go around, we survey what wells are out there, get some information about the groundwater aqua conditions in that area. Next slide. Few example report products from our tribal programs. I've got one from the Rosebud, which is a groundwater assessment that was published a couple of years ago. Another one from Fort Berthold in North Dakota. Again, mostly just going across the state, we've got a whole bunch of these. So if you're interested in learning more about some of those reports, just check in with me later. Next slide. I think this is my last one. As part of our tribal programs, we always try to incorporate some elements of building tribal capacity, training efforts, trying to, you know, if there's an opportunity to teach classes. Showing a picture here is Bill Eldridge is helping do some training for the Turtle Mountain Community College up in North Dakota, actually. So he's doing some hands-on demonstrations with, teaching the class how to work with groundwater level records and things like that. So just wanted to point that out, and I think that's my last slide. So any questions about kind of a, I know I sped through that, felt super fast. Apologies, but I just wanted, wanted to make sure that you're aware of kind of an overview of all the cool stuff that we're working on. So any questions?
I'll ask you the same question I asked Cheryl. Do you know how much water flows out of the Black Hills annually into the Missouri?
Not off the top of my head, but we do have that, that kind of information at our fingertips in a, in a report, so.
Do you have a stream gauging station at the confluence of the Cheyenne and Bell?
The Cheyenne and the Bell.
Cheyenne is gauged part of the downstream before the Bell at Owasta, Belle Foucheneer, Elm Springs. It's just upstream from the confluence.
So you can combine those two.
Been many gauges on the main stem, various gauges on the main stem Cheyenne downstream from there.
Yep, that, that information is readily available.
Any more questions for Galen?
Galen?
Yep.
On one of those slides, it looked like the population of Rapid City is decreasing, is that right?
So that's, it's kind of a slide that we're, we're still working on. The decreasing part was actually the water use. So if you want to put that up, yeah. So what that correlates to is if we show the precip, like the annual precip, that would kind of help explain why water use would decrease. So there's, it's just again, one of those factors that we're trying to get at is understanding years of higher than normal precip, we're not using as much water.
I think if you had had a graphic of cost per gallon, you might find an explanatory variable.
Any more questions? Well, thank you, Galen.
Thank you.
There's Mark right there. Our, our next presentation, we were planning on a break, but our next presentation from Mark Anderson, he's, is a Zoom one, so we're kind of locked into this time. So we'll take our break after Mark's presentation. There he is. Looks like you're, are you fishing, Mark?
How about now? Well, actually that's.
Recording in progress.
Okay. So we've got Mark Anderson. Make sure everybody can hear me. So we've got Mark Anderson, former USGS employee and educator consultant, general person who knows a lot of information about the Black Hills and Black Hills area and as well as Western United States. He's going to talk to us today about the subject of groundwater. Hey. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Well, first of all, thanks Craig for the invitation to talk about groundwater. It's kind of one of my favorite subjects, so. It's kind of one of my favorite subjects, so, and great to be able to speak with people interested in water, not only at the West Dakota, but also there in the audience. So I think I'll share my screen and see if I can. Back to the beginning. All right, should be able to see this Madison Spring, I guess. Not hearing a response, so I presume you're seeing that.
Yeah, we can see that.
Okay. All right, so we'll be talking a little bit about groundwater. This is Madison Spring, Headwater Falls, Preppish Creek. And I'm going to talk about groundwater as an resource and how we can actually do a better job today of figuring out how to manage it sustainably. So briefly, I'm going to talk a little bit about the legal environment, how groundwater is different than surface water. I'll give a few examples of where things have gone sour, around the west mainly. I got to sprinkle in a few groundwater principles, and then we'll talk about sustainable management of groundwater resource and how it applies to Black Hills. So the evolution, if you will, of groundwater law came much after surface water law. So most of the thinking a hundred years ago was that groundwater was so secret, occult, and concealed that any attempt to administer any set of legal rules would be involved in hopeless uncertainty and would therefore be practically impossible. This was pretty much the thinking in the early days about groundwater. So a lot of aspects of groundwater has grown up basically without any constraints. And you'll probably hear about Texas, the so-called Rule of Capture, and also known as the Law of the Biggest Pump. The court found that a landowner has the right to pump all the water he can from beneath his land regardless of the effect on other wells adjacent to him. That law is still in effect for much of the High Plains Act for. So this is the map of the United States where groundwater depletion has occurred. You'll see that Texas has anywhere from one hundred fifty to four hundred feet of water level declines. But it'd also draw your attention to South Dakota. Pretty much all of South Dakota has experienced, you know, quite a bit of, I can't say quite a bit, but experienced drawdown in the groundwater resources anywhere from ten to twenty-five feet. And more than that in the High Plains Act for there in the southern part of the, south central part of the state. And this is another way to look at it. This is the declines in the state of South Dakota, much just to the east of the Black Hills. So we're not immune from groundwater depletion. But the science of geohydrology has advanced now, I guess we don't necessarily have to think about it as being a separate resource. There's a couple of USGS reports that are significant in this matter. One is groundwater and surface water is a single resource, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a couple of slides, and then also the sustainability of groundwater resources. So there is context now to understand better that the groundwater resources need to be managed in conjunction with surface water. So one of the concepts I'm going to introduce today is this idea that depletion of a small part of the total volume of water and storage can have large effects on surface water. So you don't have to deplete all the storage in a reservoir or a aqua system to see some adverse consequences of pumping such as water quality and subsidence can limit development. I just put some examples up here where they're looking with difficulties with groundwater depletion. I mentioned Santa Fe, Santa Fe has a, I'm getting some feedback, is that me or, I hope you can hear me all right.
I don't know, I think everybody can hear you. Yeah, we can hear you fine, we're seeing a little of that too, I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Okay. Okay, so Santa Fe is kind of a tough spot, as you can see, and they've established a watershed area which in fact is probably the most complex water system or watershed drainage in the United States. But they have areas where if you own land and it's vacant land and you want to build a house on it, you can't drill a well, a domestic well, that's unusual. So if you want to build on some land, vacant land, you got to find a neighboring property you can buy and be able to have their well too. So, and the Upper San Pedro's in, if you want, totally, two towns of Sierra Vista and Fort Wachukka are totally dependent on groundwater. Fort Wachukka is an army base, and unfortunately groundwater pumping is depleting the flow of the river. And there's, we'll talk a little bit more about the Edwards Act for soon. So plenty of examples around the west of where groundwater pumping has caused depletion in storage and had adverse effects by diminishing flow of springs in the Edwards Act. So this is the Edwards Act for, there is a nonprofit group called the Greater Edwards Act for Alliance, and they're suffering also from this idea of Rule of Capture, meaning so-called Law of the Biggest Pump. Edwards Act provides drinking water, the 1.7 million people, and it's continuing to grow. Current pumping from the Act for has resulted in diminished spring flows in San Antonio. So that's a picture of one of the springs that discharge. And these are all the springs that discharge from the Edwards Act for that in many cases are diminishing in flow. So another example, this is the High Plains Act for a little further south in Nebraska and Kansas. The big orange splotches are the depletion of groundwater mainly from pumping for irrigation and agricultural use. And that pumping depletion has caused the flow in the river, these upside down triangles are stream flow gauges along the Republican and the Smoky Hill River that have shown declining discharge over the last sixty years. One thing you may not be really informed about is, this is a figure from one of my reports, and what it shows is the age or the time since recharge for the water that's being pumped from many of these groundwater Act for systems. And so one of the ones that I worked on was the Ann Act for there in northern Arizona. And the water that's being pumped is anywhere from ten to thirty thousand years old, which means that there's relatively little modern recharge, so storage is being depleted and same way with the Tucson Basin. Anyway, so you can see around the, even in the High Plains, some of the water that's being pumped is old water instead of relatively new water for recharge. This is a common problem of groundwater being depleted from many of the Act for's in the west. So a little bit of groundwater budget terms in the simplest way we can illustrate it. You can imagine that this is a Act for, and water comes into it, of course, for recharge, and some water leaves, discharged, and this is kind of the simplest water budget we can have. And then of course you have some pumpage that's being removed. Well, if pumpage exceeds recharge and the outflow, then storage is depleted. And one of the things, these are difficult terms to measure, of course, recharge. So one of the ways you can get at that is to measure storage, meaning if storage is being depleted, then you know that your water budget is out of balance. I won't go into much more detail on that right now. I want to also introduce another concept that might not be readily recognized by a lot of folks. It's the so-called water budget myth. This has been around for a while, but let me read kind of the most important part of it. It's one of the most common misconceptions in groundwater hydrology is that a water budget of an area determines the magnitude of possible groundwater development. Several well-known hydrologists have addressed this misconception and attempted to dispel it. Somehow though, it persists and continues to color decisions by the water management community. Laws governing development of groundwater are based on this idea that pumping within a groundwater basin shall not exceed recharge. So in another way, this is often called safe yield. It's also referred to as groundwater mining if you pump more than recharge. But the point is that there can be consequences of pumping equal to recharge. So a simple illustration of this, you can imagine a groundwater Act for, and I'm using the analogy of a reservoir. So in this case, inflow to reservoirs are storage, and outflow equals, and so we have a stream that's healthy, so to speak, and you also have a riparian system. But if you have pumping from this storage reservoir that's equal to inflows and recharge, then we have no outflow. And so this would be considered safe yield, right? Well, the point is with no outflow, you're going to have some kind of, some consequences And so the way you could call the fact that you have sustained pumping from an Act for is if the pumping arrow amount is being removed is less than recharge. So that arrow and that arrow can equal that arrow. So now you may have a smaller discharge out of the system, but you can call it sustained yield if the consequences are acceptable. In other words, well, I can live with a smaller riparian system, or I can live with seasonally lower flow in the river or something. So that's kind of a quick idea, concept about sustained yield. This is another way to look at it. You know, you have a steady state system, system hasn't been pumping, hasn't been pumped before, and so then you have this depletion period, and so what you have is this deficit of groundwater storage. And if you can shut off the pumps, then the storage component will begin to recover. And if you have a cessation pumping, eventually it'll get back here, but if you have still continued some pumping and you're showing some recovery, again, if there's not undesirable consequences, you can call that sustained use. Wanted to illustrate kind of two ways that groundwater pumping can affect the stream or spring. First one is kind of by direct withdrawal. This is a pump that would be located in sometimes called Holstein Alubium or Tertiary Alubium, relative recent sands and ground is along the stream, and I have an illustration in a minute on that. This was established in other states that followed it, it was so-called ruled for a decision out of the Supreme Court of Arizona. It said, basically, if you're pumping from here, you're pumping the creek. And Rapid City has followed that. The galleries, for example, when they had Meadowbrook and still have Earl Scout Gallery, the pumping from those galleries, even though it's coming from the ground, is considered to be pumping directly from the creek, so they have a replacement clause on that. The other one is this idea of pumping from a regional Act for well, it doesn't directly grab water from this captured flow of the stream, but what happens is this water that's removed is intercepted or it never makes it to the stream. So I'll show an example of that. Kind of an important decision in groundwater law was the city of Albuquerque wanted to drill several large wells along the Front Range there, and this is the Rio Grande River. They wanted to pump fifteen hundred acre feet per year. Reynolds was the state engineer at the time, and he said, no, I'm going to deny that because I think it's going to potentially affect the Rio Grande River. And so I went to the state Supreme Court, and Reynolds prevailed, in other words, he was able to make the case that this well, even though it's in the regional system, was going to affect the Rio Grande River. So this is the way it works. For one that's capturing flow directly from the stream, you can start off with little paths going to the stream, and then the pumping, you can actually reverse the flow from the stream to the well, so that's stream flow capture. Okay, everybody's familiar with this slide, I'm sure, but I wanted to illustrate one thing, and that is that the, everyone's familiar with all the springs we have around the Black Hills, particularly now as they come out of the canyons. But what we have with the situation with the Madison is that the water that comes to the land surface, like at Jackson Springs and by Sturgis and Spearfield and so forth, is rejected recharge. This is water that the Madison, I don't know if you're sent to know, it's mainly we're focusing on the Madison, just can't accept that it's basically full. So at some point, if head declines like this dash line, you don't have to remove large volumes of water from storage to be able to have undesirable effects. So back to that groundwater, the water budget myth issue, you can just reduce the head, and if the head is reduced enough, you can diminish the flow. So I'll show a couple of examples of that. Harden Davis and I gave a presentation at the hydrology conference and just kind of looked at the amount of head decline that's in some of the observation wells around the Black Hills for just a relatively short period, four or five years of low average precipitation views. And this well, seventy-two feet of head decline. This one near Tilford is eighty feet of head decline, and then some people, if I remember this one, the observation well, these are operated by the state. This well, by Ripley Gardens, had a head decline of one hundred and thirty-four feet. That's a pretty significant offset. So the point is that, you know, Madison head against the hills is vulnerable to reductions in inflow, but also pumping. Many people have seen this, and maybe it's become trite, but this is the observation well at Jackson Springs site, and it back in twenty-seven, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, reached a head above land surface and only about ten feet. So if this had continued down and lost another ten feet head, this stream would certainly diminished, not stopped at all. Fortunately, today it's recovered quite a bit. This is the minimum that reached back in two thousand eight, has recovered, but it does have. But it does have these measures down where the head decline exists. So, this is obviously a really important key, key, uh, spring for, for us here in Rapid City area and around the Black Hills. These are all the cities or communities that are, have wells into the Madison limestone, both here in South Dakota as well as over in Wyoming. And this is just a, uh, a graph that shows the cumulation, cumulative number of wells, just volume, just the number of wells that have been drilled into the Madison. I illustrate this, uh, for especially heed in Pennington County is that in the sweep of history, the development of the Madison is relatively recent. We're talking about something that's largely since, you know, 1980 or so. So, we had the drought in late 80s. So, um, you know, kind of the big issue for me that I think we need to pay attention to is, is until there are some other alternative sources of water, whether it's a pipeline, I don't know, or other, other ways of acquiring some water for the area. It's going to be the Madison is, is the place where, uh, that growth will be supported. I wanted to take just a moment to, I think I, do I still have a couple of minutes, Greg?
Yeah, you're, you're getting real close to our 40-minute limit here, so.
Forty minutes?
Well, no, the Zoom meeting has a 40-minute limit.
Oh, but this is, if I can get it going right, this is only a, a couple of minutes.
Yeah, you should, you should be fine, but it's close to.
Thank you.
Okay, can you see this now or do I need to?
Yeah, we can see that.
So, this is, uh, the, uh, documentary called Pump Cry. And there's a couple of just phrases I was wanting to have you listen to.
We can't do this, and that, but that's what we do. That's how groundwater is managed. We pretend that groundwater was some separate part of the system that we could, we could ignore. We can't ignore it any longer.
Uh, we had audio and then we lost it.
Oh.
California.
Is there a?
Don't have any audio now?
Uh, Kenny, it's popping in and out.
Well.
Fine on me right now.
Got these darn ads that jump in here.
Is a highly productive agricultural area.
It's working.
A very large influx of vineyards planted in the area, lots and lots and lots of wine grapes, which has been a spectacular thing for our economy. Um, I can't downplay that. Uh, but as a rural resident, I found myself personally getting very worried back in the early 90s even that, that this supposedly endless aquifer that we sat over, that we were sure it would last forever when we bought our place, would be endangered.
My wolf drive for two years already. Okay, ready, let's go.
So, anyway, were you able to hear that?
Yeah, parts of it there.
Okay, well, you know, you can look at it later, but, uh, basically, great quote. She said, "We thought this acter was an endless supply and would last forever." That's a common sort of approach to, uh, to things. And then, uh, this is my last slide, so I got to go back. Anyway, so my final message is, uh, let's, don't assume the Madison acter will always be there. Meaning, of course, the formation will be there, but I mean, the available supply, um, can easily go the way of many other acters throughout the West if we don't carefully manage it. Uh, the tools exist today to manage it, uh, to avert the depletion problems so prevalent in the West. This means monitoring storage change, it means modeling, which I know the USGS is proposing to do. So, there are the tools. It's not the secret, occult, unmanageable resource that we used to talk about. And, uh, but there will be a need to examine additional water supply strategies to sustain ecosystems and population growth. Can't just rely on the Madison. So, um, that's my story, Greg.
Okay, I think, uh, we, we have a few minutes for questions if somebody has one, two.
Any questions for Mark? I guess not.
Okay. No question.
No questions.
Must have been persuasive.
Very persuasive. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. All right. Talk to you later after the meeting.
Thanks. Yeah. We're going to take a 15-minute break, and then we'll go through our round.
Recording stop.
Roundtable session, and we'll return. Thank you. Right, uh, we'll start the roundtable discussion. Uh, got a, each, yeah, everybody has a copy of the agenda. There's some general guidelines, but we've been doing this, just starting, going around tables. And you can tell, talk to us about what you're doing with the organization or individually, whatever. So, uh, we're going to start right over here. Identify yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and what you do. And if you want to share any information with the group today.
So, Katie Lookbar, Dakota Regional Water System. I just joined September 1st, and Cheryl presented, so I'm going to let what Cheryl presented speak prior to what we're doing.
Okay, nothing to add?
Nope, other than.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody.
So, we'll just move around the table then. Go ahead, introduce yourself and what, who you're with.
Alan Anderson. I'm all with several different groups, but the reason I'm here is as the chair of the Rapid City Standing Committee on Sustainability. And we're an advisory group to the mayor and to the city council. We don't have any direct authority, you know, but we have a budget per state. But we gather information, advise the city council and the mayor. Table the deputy events, educate the public. Very involved with ERA and Western Conference on Earth Day each year, and we do a lot of tabling events. Occasionally, we'll advocate for clean water issues for the city council, which we did with the Rapid Creek mine exploration issue last year. But that's our, our current involvement in water issues is kind of monitor and educate.
Okay. I know, I know, uh, West Dakota, we got an, had an award from, from the group, from the city a while back, so we certainly appreciate, uh, being recognized for some of the work that we do.
Yeah, one of our members was Dr. Keller, and, uh,
Yes.
He was very much involved in that project as well.
Yep.
Brought it up to speed and did the recommendation, everything. Really appreciate the work you're doing. That's really going to change things over there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's, that's about it.
Just move down the table then.
Let me see if you guys will just keep passing that down. All right, I think we can make that happen. See how much you can tangle up in the process or something, I don't know. All right, uh, again, I'm Jeremy Kent. I'm the area fisheries supervisor for, uh, Western South Dakota with Game and Fish. So, uh, I guess, um, being a fisheries supervisor, water and fish kind of go together, it, it seems. So, uh, we've, we've worked, uh, with, uh, West Dakota on a, a lot of different projects, and a number of them were, uh, mentioned earlier. But, uh, they, they helped, uh, purchase a dredge that we used, uh, to dredge out Canyon Lake. Worked on a, a number of studies with, uh, the school of mines, uh, looking at the impact of, uh, Didymo, which is a, uh, diatom that, that grows in the stream and covers rocks and stuff. So, that, and then, uh, you know, more recently, uh, trying to understand, uh, water use, uh, in the, the Pactola and Deerfield systems, we're, we're partnering together on, uh, trying to get a Watersmart grant for that. And then, uh, the, the other thing, uh, West Dakota has, uh, you know, put up some money to help us fund our invasive species programs for the last, I think, three or four years now. So, that's, that's been a, a large help to, to help us fund, uh, stations that are, uh, inspecting boats coming in and out of our reservoirs, uh, and trying to, to slow the spread of, of zebra mussels. So, if, if anybody has any questions about, about any of those issues, um, go ahead and throw them at me.
So, since West Dakota has helped fund the, the inspection stations, you know, what's the outlook for the future? As, you know, is, is an accurate Pactola has now had confirmed, has a confirmed zebra mussel population that's almost certain to, to spread. Are these inspection stations, can it be coming and exercising futility, or will they soon become so?
I mean, I, I guess it, um, I, I guess I, I would say that as of currently, Game and Fish's, uh, stance on it is that we're going to continue as, uh, as we have been. I think as these infestations in, increase in the Black Hills, uh, that conversation may start to change. And so, um, I think, you know, if you look at other states, uh, certainly, you know, that's how these naturally, uh, develop is that, you know, the more infestations that you get in an area, the less, uh, the less presence you have to, to try to slow it down or stop it. So, um, a- as of currently, uh, Pactola is infested, uh, but, uh, you know, that was, I think, July of last year, uh, it was infested. Through different monitoring and, and things that way, we haven't discovered any in, in our other Black Hills reservoirs to this point. So, um, in, in eastern South Dakota, that's not the case. There, there, you know, a number of new infestations every year. So, I, I would assume that, you know, probably within the next few years, we'd have another infestation, and, uh, we'll, we'll see where the conversation goes from there, so.
Yeah, I know as inspections, you actually found z- zebra mussels on the boats, any boats?
Yes, so, um, so specifically, um, I'm, I don't think that, you know, just your recreational fishermen coming and going from Pactola, it's very rare to find zebra mussels on those. And, and really what we're doing, uh, with, with those boaters is we're, we're trying to educate them that, you know, drain, drain your boat, uh, you know, try to get any standing water out of it. Drain, drain your lower unit on your motor, um, get that water out of there because, uh, juvenile, uh, well, so the, the young of zebra mussels are microscopic, you can't see them. And they're, they're free-floating in the water until they become a settler, and they, they settle on a hard substrate and attach. And, and that's what you'll, you'll see, um, is, is either a settler, which you can feel like the side of a boat. And if it feels like sand, those are the settlers, um, starting to settle on a substrate. And, and then what you can actually see is an adult zebra mussel. But, uh, so what, what, when we actually see adult zebra mussels, it's typically on, uh, the boats that are housed in the marinas, um, that stay in the water. Um, so if, if they've got their motor lowered down in the water and it's just sitting there, it has a much greater chance that those, uh, those are going to settle on it and, and attach, and then become an adult, and then we'll actually be able to see the, the mussel itself.
Okay. Dustin, you were wrong, so.
Here we go.
Go in that direction, so if you want to introduce yourself.
One more question.
Okay.
Have you seen anything in the way of ecological ramifications yet in eastern South Dakota where they've been more prevalent for a bit longer?
Yeah, I, I would say, um, there's, there's quite a difference between, uh, you know, their systems and, and what we have out here. So, uh, you know, especially when you consider like nutrient loading. So, uh, we, we would consider, you know, a lot of our eastern, uh, South Dakota lakes eutrophic, uh, high, high nutrient inputs, whereas, you know, our, like Pactolas, probably our most, uh, you know, far end of the spectrum, oligotropic, uh, low nutrients. And, and so, um, how zebra mussels affect every system is going to be a little bit different. But certainly in those, uh, you know, highly eutrophic systems, East River, um, it's actually clearing up the water. You know, zebra mussels filter water, um, and so we're starting to see, you know, clearer water. And that's having effects too, where, you know, sunlight penetration through the water is greater. So, plant growth, uh, is starting to come up, um, to, to a point where, um, you know, that's actually a problem for, uh, some people, either for recreation or from an aesthetic standpoint for lake shore owners or, or things like that. So, there, there certainly are some effects. We haven't seen any negative impacts, uh, from a fish perspective, but.
Dustin, we want to.
Yeah, I, uh, apparently I shouldn't skip my spots, I'm way less interesting than that, so. Again, Dustin Dale with E2S, I work for a number of water systems within the region. West Dakota Regional is the big one right now. Rapid Valley Sanitary District, Black Hawk Water, are different areas that we work with. So, um, here is kind of as water is, there's one water and kind of what, what can we do to protect our source and how it, pulling from what area affects different areas. So, uh, here for any questions regarding West Dakota or any of the water sanitary districts we work with.
Very good.
This is kind of an interesting game handling the microphone here. I'm Dr. Lilias Jardine. I'm with Black Hills Clean Water Alliance, and our organization was formed in 2009 to work to stop new large-scale mining in the Black Hills and protect the water. So, uh, that's our interest. We're interested in a lot of the topics that have been raised here today, uh, but particularly about the mineral withdrawal, which is something that we favor and have worked for. I passed around our latest map of active mining claims in the Black Hills so that everyone has that information and can take it with you. And, um, there are currently 293,000 acres of active mining claims in the Black Hills, which is about 23% of the total Black Hills. So, on these maps, you'll see the claims, the light brown ones are the new ones since April. And if you have questions or want to contact me, our website is down at the bottom center, and you can, uh, email me through there, or I'll be sticking around here for a while too, so.
Very good, thank you. Oh, we got a question.
Question, Lilias, the, a question had come up, is it F3 that's been working towards exploration in the Pactola area?
That's one of them that has, and that's the one that's closest to Pactola. There's also Mineral Mountain Resources that's also in the Rapid Creek watershed. And then the other ones in here, in the area of this, uh, organization would be lithium activity, uh, by Mount Rushmore, and immediately south of Hill City, there's, uh, some exploration that's planned.
So, specifically with F3, have they completed the permitting process and been permitted, or were they, are they?
No, they got to the point of a draft decision, but there hasn't been a final decision.
So, the mineral withdrawal would specifically.
It's currently stopping them while they consider the process, yes, and that would stop them for 20 years.
What's the name of the company that's over by Rox, Rox?
I'm sorry, what?
What, what company's working over there by Roxford?
Roxford, that's Mineral Mountain Resources out of Canada.
Okay.
And they've been actively drilling for some number of years.
They've been drilling off and on for a couple of years, yeah.
So, what is your, do you have an understanding, you know, of this withdrawal number? Number one, are their explorations within the withdrawal area of 20,500?
There's no drilling as far as I know, and there's just surface exploration that has happened at this point.
Well, theirs has been only surface exploration.
In the area of the proposed withdrawal, yes.
Okay, so I mean, so Mineral Mountain, are they beyond the withdrawal area? They have been drilling, correct?
They have been drilling there beyond the withdrawal area. The withdrawal would only cover about 10% of the Rapid Creek watershed.
But they didn't show a map of it, but at 20,000, you know, acres, that's something on the order of 30 square miles or whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, moving it around, carving up some... Again, my name's Joanne Noyes, I'm with DA and R Geological Survey Program, and my office is here in Rapid City along with Jesse over there. We're in the one-stop building and we have just celebrated our one-year anniversary in our new building up there. As for projects in the Black Hills, I don't have specific projects that I'm working on, but I'm here as a resource. I inherited the monitoring wells from the USGS joint study on the onsite wastewater treatment systems, so there are still monitoring wells out there. I also take requests for information on where wells would be located or the quantity of water which they could get out of some wells sometimes. A lot of that though is handled now by Nikaila Steen, who is our Water Rights Program Representative in the office. My basic project right now is I have a countywide study on geology and water resources of Sully County, and that's north of here. And also I'm helping with the Western Hydrology Conference.
Hello, I'm Jamie Howeter, I'm pretty new to the USGS, just started in September. Prior to that, I was with the DA and R Drinking Water and Surface Water Programs, working with their Water Quality Monitoring Network, giving samples, so...
Hi there, I'm Melissa Smith, I am with the National Weather Service. We are the ones that not only issue weather forecasts, but we also issue the flood and flash flood watches and warnings that you hear over the EAS system and that you could also have alerted on your cell phone. We will be having some new webpages that are supposed to come online next spring that will show the, most of the USGS stations combined with the Weather Service forecast. It's also going to be on the National Water Dashboard as well. So that is one of the new projects that we are working on that's supposed to be coming online. It's a new nationwide effort. And additionally, if you ever need precipitation data or temperature data or any kind of weather information like that, just let me know and I can either put you in contact with who you need to contact or where you can find that. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ginger Wessels, and I work for the Bureau of Reclamation here in Rapid City, and I work in the Operations and Maintenance Group. And our manager, Crystal Lesmeister, is here, so I'm going to pass it on to her to kind of give an overview of what we've been doing.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, as Ginger said, I'm Crystal Lesmeister, I oversee our facilities and engineering group here in Rapid City, and I think the main projects Craig and Cheryl have already kind of touched on. And I'll just say also, reclamation right now, we do have a lot of funding opportunities through the Bill Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. A lot of those are through the Watersmart Program. And if you have any questions about that, feel free to get in touch with me and I'd be happy to get to connected with some folks that understand those programs. There's a lot of different opportunities and it's kind of a full-time job just keeping track of what's out there. And then also I'll just echo what Game Fish and Park had talked about with the zebra mussel sampling. Reclamation, we are sampling at our reservoirs as well. So we are, we are sampling at Deerfield, Angostura, and Belfush. And typically, we've been doing a sample kind of at the beginning of the boating season at the end, so that would be kind of May and August. And those samples have all come back negative, and we'll be continuing that program next year and working with Game Fish and Park if we were to get a positive sample. I think that's kind of the highlights.
Okay, thank you.
Heard enough from me, so I'll keep the mic going.
I'm Colton Medler with the US Geological Survey here in Rapid City. A lot of what we've, I've worked on is actually what Galen already talked about, so there's, I don't have a whole lot to add.
Great.
I'm Aneen Ross, I'm an ecologist with the Park Service, and actually I'm not with a specific park, just, we have a really small office here in town, the Inventory and Monitoring Network. And we help parks collect data on status and trends for what they call like vital signs, some ecological parameters that they want to measure. So I kind of cover some of the water stuff, a lot of it's done in cooperation with USGS, especially, well, we cover North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, and eastern Wyoming parks. So we do a lot of cooperative agreements with them and the different water science centers. And then we also started a stream channel monitoring protocol a couple of years ago, so we set up a new site at Mount Rushmore this year, and we'll revisit that site every three years. And then we did some sites in Nebraska too. So that's what we've been up to, so pass it along.
Dan, thanks for the opportunity. I don't have a whole lot to add, I'm more here to listen to how the things that we're talking about today will affect water rights. I was particularly interested in what Mark Anderson had to say about the myth of recharge and discharge, because that's how water law is written in South Dakota. And I think we need to take a hard look at how that works for all of us in the Water Rights Program and also how it may work for a total state water planning process here in South Dakota. Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, thanks for coming.
I'm Eric Wayde, the Water Superintendent for the city of Rapid City. So without stealing a bunch of Stacy's stuff that I'll probably talk about, working pretty diligently on our lead service line inventory and prepping for all of the increased sampling for schools and daycares, which will kind of be a little bit difficult. Let's see, what else? A lot of the stuff for capital projects that Stacy's dealing with, but lead and copper is kind of the big thing we're dealing with. UCMR-5 preparing for that for next year for PFOS sampling and lithium.
I have a question, how much water did Rapid City produce last year through your system?
For last year?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Maybe you know, Stacy. How much water does Rapid City use?
Not quite, 4 billion gallons.
4 billion gallons, okay.
Thank you, Dan. Stacy Titus, Assistant Public Works Director for the city of Rapid City Public Works. I'll just try to kind of briefly give an overview of where the city's at on the water side of the Public Works Department. In my opinion, there's three words kind of that develop our strategy for the water system for Rapid City, it's resiliency, redundancy, and diversity of water sources. And our water source portfolio, there has been a renewed interest in trying to get diversification in those sources for many of the reasons that were discussed today at the topic, groundwater versus surface water and the ability to use different sources based on the hydrology conditions. I like the term resiliency because it talks about toughness and the ability to recover quickly from difficulties or to spring back. Redundancy is intentional duplication. And then when I talk about the diversity, it's really the focus on the high level is surface water, groundwater, diversity. But then the next level below it is the resiliency and redundancy. And what I'm talking about there is one surface water treatment plant was kind of the old way of doing things, but with redundancy and resiliency, maybe two or three smaller treatment plants are better strategically located within your system. So that's kind of the philosophy we're looking at. Same thing with reservoirs, ability to do maintenance on a reservoir, if you only have one reservoir and you need it in operation, very difficult, you have to use divers, you have to do different types of maintenance strategy. If we have two reservoirs to meet our needs during off-peak seasons, you're able to take a reservoir down and do maintenance. So with that, I would say those are kind of the governing guidance of how we're looking at project goals. In addition to the resiliency and redundancy, we have a heightened level of safety for city employees, we're really looking at the safety of our work environments. Public is always heightened safety as far as water quality and then the maintainability side of things. We are focusing a high level of effort on vertical assets for our water assets. And when I talk vertical assets, these are going to be your facilities, treatment plants, booster stations, and reservoirs. The horizontal assets would be your pipelines, water distribution mains and transmission mains. So with that in mind, I would say the, I'll call it the five-year plan, some of the highlights of what I am seeing as projects evolving or coming forward. We have two underground booster stations left in our system, both of those are meeting their design life. And being an underground facility, there's many safety concerns with those. So those are two more facilities we'd like to get out of our system and replace with above-ground facilities for employee safety. And once those are done, those should be the last of our below-ground pump station facilities. We have two tunnels facilities that house transmission mains, and those are 50, 60 years old. We are going to take a look at evaluating those to see if we are going to rehab those tunnel facilities or if we will replace in kind in a different manner to eliminate the tunnel facility. Three or four reservoirs are going to be constructed. The one that's probably closest to this group is the surface water treatment evaluation. And as I elaborated a little bit earlier about resiliency and redundancy, Mountain View Water Treatment Plant is 60 years old, outlived its design life, it's a surface water treatment plant on Mountain View. Originally, we had planned to replace in kind at that same location. Things have kind of changed in the last 10 years to where we've rethought that most of our growth for the city of Rapid City and demand is on the east side of town, most of our water supply or all our water supply is really on the west side of town. We're not, we're thinking it may be good to get a source of water on the east side of town, kind of give us some redundancy and resiliency there. So the strategy's going to be to look at possibly doing east-side water treatment plant to partially replace Mountain View. And then we may follow up with a plant at Mountain View still, since we have a lot of infrastructure in place there as far as pipelines go and transmission mains. But they, instead of one big plant, we may look at splitting it into two smaller plants for that resiliency. That project's going to get started here in the next few months as far as making a decision. We have three groundwater supply improvement projects that are going on. These are basically Madison wells, but we have one well that has not been active for several years. We are going to recondition that well and bring it back onto, online and into service. We have an irrigation well that we're looking at converting over to municipal use as well as irrigation, and we're looking at one new Madison well in our system. This was talked about a little bit before here too. We have a project called the Water Production Evaluation, and it has several things in it, but one of the things we're looking at is the zebra mussel. And with the zebra mussel in Pactola, we're developing a plan as to how to deal with the zebra mussel if it migrates or when it migrates into Rapid Creek and our infrastructure there. So that project is going to get started in the next few months too and look at basic methodology for the surface water treatment plants, our existing facilities, as well as the new facilities we're contemplating for addressing zebra mussel. With that, that's kind of the highlights for city of Rapid City water system.
What percent of the city's use is actually coming from the Madison Formation now?
The use of water, the percentage?
What percentage of the total of water that you produce is actually coming from the Madison Formation?
I would say Madison, that's a bookkeeping, it's kind of a tough question, Dan, because Jackson Springs, technically, we use the Gallerie Water, we have to replace that from Rapid Creek.
Right.
But it's a Madison source because of that figure we saw on how close it is to Rapid Creek. Our Jackson Springs facility produces about 48% of our water annually. So if you put Jackson Springs into the equation, we probably are relying on about 75 to 85% Madison water and 15%, 20% surface water. But if you view Jackson Springs as surface water, since we're replacing it with Pactola water, then we're probably more on a 60% surface water ratio.
Okay.
It's kind of, I always think that's a little bit complicated because we order water from Pactola for replacement.
Yeah, exactly. Anything else? Any questions?
That's all I've got.
Dan's got a question.
Is it, what's the rundown on the water supply for the contaminated wells near Ellsworth? Is that something that's on Rapid City's radar now?
Sure, I'm glad you brought that up, Dan. We just yesterday had an agreement go through the Public Works Committee for a, basically a water agreement with the city of Box Elder. And the reason for that agreement is earlier this spring, three entities came together on an agreement for working on the PFOS issue for Ellsworth Air Force Base, and that was the South Dakota Ellsworth Development Authority, city of Box Elder, and city of Rapid City. The three entities came together to basically form a problem to, or a solution to solve the PFOS issue for the airbase. So Ellsworth, for lack of a simple term, contracted with South Dakota Ellsworth Development Authority to solve the PFOS issue for the homes that are outside of the airbase boundaries that have wells that had PFOS in it. SADIDA approached Box Elder and Rapid City about how to get that done, and the outcome of that is an agreement where Rapid City will provide the water, Box Elder will run the system for them and the distribution system and the service lines for those customers, and SADIDA will fund the project. And those agreements are now going forward on all fronts. I would say construction, up and running, maybe in about two years.
Any other questions for Dan?
One more question, you mentioned an irrigation well you're going to convert and then the one you're going to rehab, which wells are those, out of curiosity?
Well number four, which is on Canyon Lake Drive, is an existing well that has been, it's, the facility is there, we have not operated it for several years because of condition, and we've decided to go ahead and bring that well back online and recondition it. And then the irrigation well is out at Red Rocks. The golf course for Red Rocks has an agreement with the city of Rapid City where we provide them irrigation water for their golf course. And... And that well has, I don't necessarily want to say excess capacity, we're going to look at improving the well. However, golf courses don't need water in the winter time, so we can utilize that well year-round if we move it into municipal use. So that's the well we're looking at converting over.
Well, number four is a mentalusa well, right?
It's labeled as a mentalusa well, however, there is some interesting discussion about how much interaction there is between the two aquifers there, between the Madison and the mentalusa on that one. But that's what it's categorized as, the mentalusa.
Okay. Any other questions for Dan? I mean, for Stacy? Okay. Thank you.
I'm just going to throw this over here since all three of us are kind of together. My name's Chris Ozark. I'm with the South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources. I'm our 319 Clean Water Act, 319 Coordinator, Section 319. Basically, what that is, is we look to put implementation, BMPs, we give money to projects basically across the state to try and improve or protect water quality. So with that, I'll kick it to Paul.
So I'm Paul Lorenzen, the administrator for the Watershed Protection Program with the Department of Ag and Natural Resources. As Chris said, one of the big things we do in the program is provide funding for non-point source assessment or implementation projects. You'll hear from Jesse here in a minute. We recently worked with West Dakota, was a partner on a rotating basin assessment project where we went out and sampled a lot of streams, a lot of lakes in the Black Hills. And East Dakota, or West Dakota provided some funding for that. We generated a lot of data, and we're going to be using that data very soon to assess those water bodies as to whether or not they meet their beneficial uses. Beneficial uses are things like recreation use, aquatic life use, domestic water supply use. As part of what we call the Integrated Report, or it's a report that's due to EPA every two year, every even year, every two years. We use that, and once we've determined, we use that data to determine whether those water bodies are meeting those uses, and if they aren't, that we term them impaired. And then what we do is we fund these projects to go out and work in those watersheds to help improve the water, improve and protect the water quality. So right now, we have about six active projects, and we get about $2 million, a little over $2 million a year to funnel through to those projects. So we certainly not, don't have a pile of money across the state, but a lot of times those projects can then leverage other funds, such as through development districts, or NRCS, or a lot of different funding sources. And so we've been able, a lot of those projects have been able to generate a lot of money. The 319 money that Chris was talking about actually has, requires a 60/40 split, so we need to match that with 60, or 40% local funds. So what I, the reason why I'm here today is mainly to introduce the concept of a Black Hills non-point source implementation project. There are plenty of streams, lakes in the Black Hills that are impaired for bacteria, E. coli bacteria, total suspended solids, and a few other pollutants. And then with this new data that we've generated, we'll get a better idea of other waters that may or may not be impaired. And so we could focus on any one of those waters, but we figure it might work better if we just, if we look at the Black Hills as a whole and have resources available to begin to correct some of the water quality issues out there, especially from non-point source pollution. And so really, I just, I want to just kind of introduce that. I think that it takes a lot of partners, partnering, it takes a lot of strategic planning in order to get one of these kind of projects off the ground, especially at this large magnitude. And so I think at this, at this time, just bringing that up, and I think we'll be in, you know, communication down the road with, you know, potential roles of partnerships, generate any other potential partnerships that you might be interested in, in a project like that, and we'll visit with other entities as well. And so I guess, I guess in a nutshell, I'm just kind of opening it up for any questions you might have for that, Chris, unless I've missed some stuff.
No, I was just going to say, I know, so what we're talking about is kind of implementation, similar to what Dan and his group did, you know, kind of protecting that side hill with some, kind of the socks or whatever. It'd be similar to that type of stuff. Basically, we, you know, we would provide some funding with, to help do some of that type of work, so.
Who would be a typical partner in something like that?
Typical partner, I think NRCS for sure, because NRCS right now has a pile of money. And so they're great, they also have technical, can provide technical assistance. In the past, I don't know if some of you might be familiar with the Spring Creek Project that was implemented probably eight years ago or so. I think we, Respec worked on that, or did the on-the-ground type stuff, because one of the big issues is getting somebody to, that can actually go out and work on the ground, put things on the ground. So partnerships being partnerships with entities for money and, and, and technical assistance, and then also we need somebody that can actually go out, knock on doors, you know, work with landowners, work with entities to put best management practices on the ground. So it would be a similar thing to that, that Spring Creek Project, but just on a larger scale. We're figuring if you start it at a larger scale, then we have, we have resources available to do a lot of different things. And then we can, and then as time goes on, we could then provide focused plans on certain drainages, such as Spring Creek and Rapid Creek and so on. So, but to get it, to get kind of the whole thing going at this point, and put some reason, put some money in there to do, to do various things to improve water quality would be kind of a start.
Do you have something in writing that you're going to send out on that? Or how do people find out about it?
So we do have an RFP, which is, actually, we'd probably be looking at next October 1st, is kind of the deadline for project implementation plans. Probably the closest one here is the Beaufouche. So usually how it works is there's a sponsor, so the Beaufouche has the Beaufouche River Watershed Partnership. They're kind of the sponsor of the project, they kind of run kind of some of the admin, but then, I mean, they also work, you know, with, with partners such as conservation districts, NRCS, you know, maybe in the Black Hills, it might be Forest Service, it might be Fly Fishers Association, or Fly Fishermen, you know, basically any, any partners available, but, so.
Okay. I'm just curious how it goes about, you know?
Yep, so I mean, like, so we also, some of our other active projects, ones ran through the South Dakota Soil Health Coalition, one through the Day County Conservation District, Minnehaha Conservation District, James River Water Development District runs the South Central Project. So I mean, it, yeah, it can get run through anybody.
Is there 319 projects out here going on right now?
No, so right now, the only, the closest one would be the Beaufouche. So right now, there's, yeah, basically no 319 money available in the Black Hills, so.
So I think it's something that we would continue to come to meetings and talk about, and to help guide whomever the appropriate sponsor would be, to put in for that, to put in for that plan that's due October 1st, which we would, we would also provide technical assistance on that as well. I throw out a contractor, just because that's, that's kind of who runs the Beaufouche one. Doesn't have to be a contractor, but they tend to have the expertise to get things off the ground, do a lot of the, develop the plan, those kinds of things.
Okay.
Chris, did I hear you correctly that erosion control activities could be?
So one thing that EPA's been pushing, and I think they're going to, I actually have a national meeting to go to next week, but one of the things they're starting to push more, more states are starting to push EPA towards protection. Like, let's, let's protect it before it gets bad. So that's one thing that I think could be a possibility for sure in the Black Hills.
So would that be viable in an urban environment where?
We also allow, 319 also allows urban BMPs to be put in place as well.
Well, we've got a huge number of areas around town that can use the works.
Right.
Any possibilities regarding stormwater mitigation? That's typically been considered a point source.
I think with Rapid City probably having an MS4 requirement, I think 319 is not allowed in that.
Yeah.
But.
But that doesn't mean that the 319 project wouldn't leverage other funds to, to then work, to then put towards something like that.
Any other questions?
We can talk more in the future.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is just kind of an introduction to what, what we were thinking that, you know, I think the Black Hills is a pretty valuable water resource for South Dakota.
It is.
Probably be a good, good thing to have some, a pot of money out here to be able to have BMPs put in place.
And they're a little more complex a lot of times than, say, some stuff out east where a lot of it's just ag, you know, livestock and grazing and that kind of stuff. Out here, there's, it's pretty diverse. The non-point source part of it's pretty diverse. So I think that's about all we had had to introduce anyhow, and Jesse can take off with the rotating basin stuff.
Okay.
I'm Jesse Wilkins, also with SD, DA and R here, but I'm in the Rapid City office. These guys are from here. I just have a few slides to go through. We completed the rotating basins project that you guys graciously provided funding for. Thank you for that. We got all the work done. What rotating basins is, is we divide the state up into five basins, and we spend two years in each basin aggressively monitoring every lake and stream that we can possibly monitor. And so after two years in one basin, we move on to another basin. The whole idea being in 10 years, we've covered the whole state. Next slide, please. Those are the parameters that we sample for, not going to go into that too much, but those are kind of our standard parameters. A little bit different between lakes and streams because they're different types of systems. Next slide, please. Paul mentioned some of these data uses, like the Integrated Report to figure out, like, are these water bodies impaired? But another thing that's not on the slide that Paul was talking about was to guide implementation efforts, because it makes a lot of sense to put your money where your problem actually is, rather than spending it somewhere that the problem isn't. So all this data that we collected can be used to guide a potential project out here. It also tells us if we have local water quality issues, and the public probably ought to know that. One of the reasons we collected all this data is, in order to assess a stream, we have to meet the minimum data requirements, because you can't just go collect one sample and say, hey, this stream's great, or this stream's polluted. For streams, you're going to want 20 samples in five years. For lakes, you're going to want to monitor over a period of about 10 years, with two of those years of being sampled, and two samples within those two years. Next slide, please. So we collected a lot of samples. In the last two years, 660 stream samples in the Black Hills and about 150 lake samples. Pretty intensive. We had a crew of, a coworker, another scientist, and myself, along with two to three seasonals each summer, or interns, out doing field work every day from May until the end of September. We also did QA QC sampling to make sure that we're doing a good job, and we're collecting these samples correctly, and our data is valid. So yeah, it was a lot of data that we produced that can be utilized by other agencies here in the region, as well as on any other scale, and by the local populace. This information is available on our Water Quality Monitoring Access Portal on the Dan or webpage. And then anything else, not, what should I say? Harmful algal blooms samples are on our harmful algal blooms map, which I'm going to talk about here in a second. Next slide, please. So this relates to harmful algal blooms. What that is, is when you have algae that's growing in such a manner that is causing problems, whether animals are dying, or becoming sick, or people, or it's just gross and people don't want to get in the water. That isn't such a big issue out here in the western part of the state compared to the eastern part. But one thing that came up a few years ago in Zion National Park in Utah, there was a dog death where a dog ate a clump of algae that was dislodged from the stream bed, and it had a seizure and died in about 15 minutes. About the same time, an irrigation canal worker that was cleaning out canals ended up with stroke-like symptoms. Researchers looked into this, local health officials, local health officials, it all led back to antitoxin A, which is produced by algae, or blue-green algae in particular, cyanobacteria. And you can have these kind of in two different systems. You can have lakes, like in East River, South Dakota, where it's pelagic algae and it just floats around, or in these mountain stream environments, it's attached to the stream bed and banks. And so because this happened in Utah, we were curious, we also have arid, mountainous environments, not exactly like Utah, but do we have this here? Because we do have algal mats that are along our stream beds, and we see those all over. Spring Creek has a lot in particular. And so we can go and collect grab samples to figure out if there's any toxins there right now, but that doesn't tell us anything other than right now. And we've been doing a little bit of that, but we wanted to figure out what's happening in between our samples. So we saw some research about this, it's called spat monitoring, solid phase adsorption toxin tracking. It's essentially two pieces of copper mesh with some adsorbent resin sandwiched in between them, and that's all held together by an embroidery hoop. First time I've used embroidery hoops in science. And you put these out in a lake or stream, and toxins will absorb or stick to the resin in that device. And then that can be analyzed in a lab, and they can tell you over that period of time how much toxin stuck to that, that device. So we put those out in six water bodies, and we were testing for three different toxins, antitoxin, like I mentioned, saxitoxin, which is the cause of paralytic shellfish poisoning, also a very nasty toxin. Those two are neurotoxins, so they affect the nervous system. And then also mycosystin, which is a hepatotoxin which affects the liver. Mycosystin's very common in South Dakota, especially East River. It's our most common toxin. But out here, we don't usually see it in levels that are concerning. But we wanted to see is, are any of these occurring? And so we're still waiting on results from the actual spats, but we do have results from our grab samples. We collected a grab sample for those toxins when we put the spat out, and we collected another one when we picked it up. We leave those up for about one to two weeks, we put them out twice. We had one set in August and another in October, early October. We did see some elevated mycosystin on Sheridan Lake. It was four micrograms per liter, the standard is eight. So it wasn't over the standard by any means, but it was notable. If any of you are familiar with Sheridan, right up by the face of the dam, algae accumulates by the spillway, so that's a particular spot that we were looking at, and there wasn't some mycosystin present. We're probably going to keep doing this in the region, we're going to hit some new water bodies, might hit Rapid Creek next year, not sure. We're kind of looking into all that, and that's, that's where we're at with it right now. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Jesse? Chris, not, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Dan, did you, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I had one topic. Do you want to pull up that?
Yeah.
PowerPoint? It's kind of a specific topic, really potentially looking for partners that, it's the one on Rhodes Fork. So West Dakota has been funding a gauge on Rhodes Fork for, well, since 1982, continuous record gauge up there. It's on the North Fork of Rapid Creek, about 10 miles west of Rochford. And I've kind of started questioning, you know, the need for operating a full-time gauge there into the future, looking at the possibility, perhaps cutting it back to what's called a peak flow gauge, where they, in essence, typically they visit that site at four times a year, make a measurement, and then they're operating a crest stage gauge which will detect the peak flows. And, you know, that's been done at a, typically, it's a fraction the cost of a continuous record gauge. So, you know, this is what we called a headwater spring. The flow is pretty steady. You can see the entire range has been from about three-second foot to 10-second foot, almost exclusively with, you know, just a couple of exceptions in there. The next slide shows the measurements that have been made when the gauge has surfaced or serviced. So, you know, on the left, where it shows the individual sides, you can see the, they're almost identical, you know? You certainly capture a large majority of the record that way. So the, the next slide, the lower graph, the red graph is Rhodes Fork, where the instantaneous measurements are superimposed with the daily flow record. And, you know, you see that you certainly capture the large majority. that you certainly capture the large majority. Above that is plotted the, the same information for Castle Creek above Deerfield Reservoir. It's been a long-term gauge, and you can see there's quite a bit more variability in there, it experiences a lot more runoff, but, you know, certainly they correlate well. So I guess, one specific question would be if, you know, West Dakota would cut this back to funding only the crest stage gauge, would there be any entities that would have sufficient utility for that dataset that they might be willing to, you know, pick up some of the funding, you know, really having a desire for the full-time gauge? So, you know, I don't know if someone like the City of Rapid City, Forest Service, et cetera, might be interested, but that would be kind of the question. Next slide shows just the peak flow record, which is really pretty interesting. I looked closely at this when this concept came up, and it's obvious, I mean, it used to be that, you know, runoff events were essentially nonexistent, and that began changing a little bit. The next slide shows the peak flow record for Castle Creek, you don't really see such a thing there. Next slide, I think there's a reason for it, if you can see, that's a Google Earth screenshot, the red circle shows the location of the Rhodes Fork gauge, and you can see a certain amount of red top pine in there, it's basically bark beetle beginning to die off. So then the next slide, it's taken from NWS Mapper, but more recent imagery, and it shows that it's, you know, a lot of that timber is no longer there. So, you know, that may be the reason for that, mostly just curiosity. And then the final slide is another NWS Mapper stream capture, so the, the highlighted one in the center is, is the Rhodes Fork gauge. About ten miles south of there are, gages on Castle Creek above Deerfield and then below also, so beyond that, it's quite a distance to other gauges, and, you know, my thought has been it might be useful to, you know, I guess I'd just soon take funds that we save if we cut that back and actually install other crest stage gauges in the area that could basically begin to look at not only the peak flow record, but, you know, we've got a lot of perennial streams with basically no information there. So examples would be actually just, just north of the Rhodes Fork is the, is Black Fox, a similar headwater stream, you know, we have absolutely no information on it, and then all kind of north and east of there, within the headwaters of Box Elder Creek, you know, we've had a long-term gauge downstream from Nemo for many years, but the, kind of a dearth of information in the headwaters of it. So, that of course is outside of West Dakota's Pennington County, you're up into Lawrence County, you haven't really looked closely at what might be done to the south, but question would be whether there might be other potential partners to, you know, kind of look at a network. You have to go into it, you know, for the purposes of peak flow record, you want a bare minimum of ten years of record to do a log Pearson analysis, and probably should look at longer, so, you know, I don't know if between now DA and R, Forest Service, et cetera, et cetera, if anybody might have interest there. But if there might be interest, please let me know, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Doesn't look like. Well, that kind of concludes our roundtable session, concluding comments. I want to thank everybody that attended today, I think we've been doing this for a number of years, and I think everybody is sure probably walks away with some new information, and we also, we kind of do our own thing, you know, and everybody else is kind of doing their own thing, and it's nice to get together, and if there's some things that we can share as partners down the road, you know, it was very interesting to hear from DA and R and some of their programs that are coming down the pipe, that might be a possibility of partnering with down the road, so again, thank you for coming, and, meaning the journey.